Good evening. I call this April 27th, 2021, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On April 29th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/livevideo. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the Town Council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are four Town Council members present in council chambers and two participating remotely to ensure that proper distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Tonight's meeting includes a continued public hearing from our April 13th meeting. Town Council understands the importance of active citizen participation. Public address and public hearing comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. Comments received from interested parties that include the full name and address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each for a total of 30 minutes. Town Council may choose to suspend all or some of these rules if so desired. In-person public comment will be allowed for tonight's meeting. Council chambers' capacity will be limited to ensure social distancing. Speakers will be asked to wait outside council chambers until their turn to speak. Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will now conduct a roll call of all council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender? Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present except for Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. All right, item three, is there a motion and second to invoke Rule 19?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson. Is there a second?
Aye.
I have a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
No. There's none from the remote either.
Okay. Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I'm moved that we adopt this evening's agenda.
A motion from Councilmember Rao. I have a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the regular agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda, a personnel policies update, approval of the Town Council annual retreat minutes, and approval of the March meeting minutes. Is there a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Mayor Protem Johnson?
Question?
Yes.
If we want to pull any items off the consent agenda, is that after the motion?
Why don't we go back one step then? Will you please rescind your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda for discussion?
I would like to pull something from the consent agenda. I'd like to pull the Personnel Policies Update from the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
For a brief discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for that one?
Yes, I would. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for the Personnel Policies Update, which I would like to pull off as consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And there's a second from Mayor Protem. Town Clerk Smith will do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item 5A passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I now recognize Councilmember Robati to read our one proclamation tonight, a proclamation recognizing Municipal Clerks Week.
Yes, and I would like to take a moment of personal privilege just to say how honored I am to read this proclamation because our Town Clerk, Eric Smith, does such a fabulous job. Whereas, a proclamation recognizing the 52nd anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week, whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Town Clerk, Eric Smith, and Deputy Town Clerk and former Town Clerk, Erin L. Hudson, and to all the municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and for the exemplary dedication to their communities that they represent. Adopted this 27th day of April, 2021.
Thank you very much. And speaking of Town Clerk, at this time, Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
There were two comments received for public address. The first comment from Andrew Jocelyn, 423 Willingham Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. Morrisville Town Council members, I would like to voice my opinion in favor of the Town of Morrisville putting a permanent disc golf course at Church Street Park. My name is Andrew Jocelyn. I am a Morrisville resident of more than 15 years and as of April 12th, 2021, a small business owner in Morrisville of Yeet Street Disc. Watching the recent Parks Committee meeting where the members refused to recommend this park amenity was extremely frustrating to me. I felt the committee failed to see the benefit and potential of this park feature that is both very affordable and highly anticipated. I applaud the committee for recommending the pop-up course. If the meeting regarding the permanent course had happened after the upcoming pop-up disc golf course installation, I am sure the overwhelming response to the temporary course would have swayed the committee in complete favor of the permanent course. I further believe they would have started looking for more disc golf park options in Morrisville. Please do not let this opportunity pass us by. Looking at recent statistics, it is very apparent that disc golf is on the rise. This is because disc golf is easy to pick up and just start playing. The basic rules are simple with a very low barrier of entry. It's affordable with most courses being free to play and can be played with a single inexpensive disc. It's challenging to master, though the sport is easy to get started playing, the mastery of the sport takes practice and dedication. The casual players may play once a weekend while dedicated players will play every day. It's a sport that can be played together with the entire family regardless of age or skill level. It's a sport that encourages low-impact exercise, and it's a naturally social-distancing sport. Spreading groups throughout the course by around 200 feet is part of the basic etiquette. As a player, my rounds usually end in a visit to a restaurant near the course where my fellow disc golfers will relax and recap the day's highlights. Regretfully, this is not currently happening in Morrisville as there are not any courses in the town. As a small business owner, I want to see more residents and visitors getting out of the house and into local Morrisville attractions and local businesses. This is great for our local economy and boosts the favorable opinion of our town and the region. Let's not lag behind on this front any more than we already are. As a resident, I want to have amenities in our parks that improve my quality of life. The disc golf course can be used by residents and visitors of all ages, much more so than other more expensive park features. I want to see my town offer a wide variety of activities. People who live in a top-10 city in the U.S. should never have to leave their city to enjoy a sport as popular as disc golf. My business partner, Mark Moore, and I opened Yeet Street Disc, a disc golf pro shop in Morrisville on April 12th, 2021. We chose Morrisville as our location for its business-friendly environment, affordable leasing, and of course, location, location, location. While there are 16 disc golf courses within 15 miles of our location, none are in Morrisville, and this is a noticeable gap in the town's recreational offerings. We feel that the area is missing out on an amenity that a huge number of residents would enjoy. Not only will more people come to Morrisville to play the sport that we love, but they will also engage with other businesses in the area, which will increase tax revenue to support public programs as well as boosting local businesses. I have attached a petition in support of our claim that this park amenity is wanted and will be utilized by our residents and those from the larger Triangle area. The local economy, our store included, will benefit by having amenities related to one of the fastest-growing activities in our area. Right now, the cities around Morrisville are the ones reaping the benefits. We look forward to assisting the town in any way we can to raise its profile as one of the more popular recreational destinations within the Triangle. The second comment was from Mark Dixon, 1413 Everettsville Road, Morrisville. I am not speaking on behalf of my seat on the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee. I am not speaking on behalf of the Austin Ridge Middle School PTSA, which I lead. Last week, I visited the new disc golf store that just opened on Chapel Hill Road. I have never played before but thought that I should have an experience before making further comments about the proposal for the course at Church Street Park. I purchased just a few discs with the help of a rather kind and informed employee. I took my father, who was visiting from Michigan, to a course by the American Tobacco Trail in Cary. We only had time to play six holes. I was absolutely terrible, as was my father, as we both averaged seven shots per hole. However, it was a really nice walk in the woods and gave us time away from our electronic devices to have a nice talk. I disagree with the Parks and Recreation Committee to vote down the proposed Church Street Disc Golf Course. I think this will be of value to the town. Please reconsider and add this amenity. Now more than ever, we need to be encouraged to get outside and enjoy family, friends, and nature. There was one comment received that lacked the required information. This comment suggested that council open the meetings to residents with proof of a COVID-19 vaccination. All comments were provided to council in their entirety and will be entered into the public record.
Thank you, sir. Could a staff member check in the lobby to make sure there isn't anyone wishing to speak in person? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, public hearing. There is one continued public hearing item on the agenda, consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will provide an item update. Mr. Lawson?
Good evening, council. I have no updates. I just want to kind of recap the text amendments. As you remember, most of them are related to Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes, and those are considered mandatory for adoption by July 1. And then there were various other discretionary text amendments. I have no updates, but I can happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Okay. I believe there is a public hearing comment. If we can hear that. Well, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lawson before we have the hearing comment?
Are these questions about the specific items that he just mentioned or about the UDO changes in general?
You can go at the everything.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Robati?
Okay. So, on page 228 of 532 pages in the agenda, let me just find what page that is. It's the section that refers to major changes in the plan or agreement that has already been approved.
Did you say, is that page 228?
Of the, yeah, 228 of 532. So, yeah, so, okay, it's number seven, C subsection 2, the second bullet there. So, this is apparently talking about changes from the plan that's been approved, and this is what constitutes a major change in a plan that would cause it to have to go back for additional approvals. And we've removed an increase greater than 20% in residential density.
So, I remember, there was a lot of amendments. What I'm remembering for this section is the new general statutes would not allow staff to approve any increase in residential density if council had approved the original permit. As I'm reading it now, let me check on that before the next meeting. That might have been a mistaken error, something I put in that probably shouldn't have been because it does sound like I'm saying that it wouldn't be a major modification anymore.
Yeah, that's how I read it, but I figured that probably wasn't what you meant. And that's also actually on page 230. There's a few places in there that it occurs, and it's crossed out every time. I just want to make sure that if someone is going to increase residential density more than 20%, or frankly, at all, but definitely more than 20%, that they have to go back through an approval process.
Okay. Let me look into that. I think there's another section we changed that made it so any increase in residential density would have to come back to council, but if not, I'll make the necessary changes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Is there anything else, Councilmember Robati?
No, I don't believe there is.
Okay. Any other council members have any questions for Mr. Lawson before we hear public hearing comments? Okay. Hearing none. Town Clerk Smith, were there any public hearing comments?
Yes, sir, there were. There was one comment received for the public hearing item from Mina Morcos on behalf of the Wake County Public School System. Good evening, Town Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share a written statement of support from the Wake County Public School System for the text amendment regarding the elimination of special-use permits for mobile classrooms. Presently, Wake County Public Schools renews these special-use permits every three to five years for its mobile classrooms. The elimination of this requirement would assist in providing a more overall efficient process for Wake County Public Schools and the Town of Morrisville. Noted below are some of these benefits. There has been tremendous residential growth in the Town of Morrisville over the last decade, and as a result, there is a need for mobile classrooms at schools located in the areas of highest growth. Wake County Public Schools, along with its consultants, use great care in designing and delivering schools that meet the capacity needs. However, there are times that the population growth requires mobile classrooms. One of the biggest benefits of mobile classrooms is that it limits the unpopular need for busing students to other schools. With respect to cost, the legal fees associated with the special-use permits typically exceed several thousand dollars per renewal that Wake County Public Schools could allocate to other schools' needs. Adding to this process is the uncertainty if a special-use permit will be extended or not approved. The elimination of these special-use permits would save the Town of Morrisville a considerable amount of time presently needed for the special-use permit renewal process. In summary, there are multiple benefits to Wake County Public Schools and to the Town of Morrisville to eliminate the special-use permits. Wake County Public Schools appreciates the long, successful relationship that it has had with the Town of Morrisville and looks forward to continuing to work together as strategic partners. Council has received this comment in its entirety, and it will also be entered into the public record.
That was the extent of the submissions? Okay, if you could check the lobby again, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Seeing no one there. Does Councilmember Robati have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. That was the other question that I had. Is the only section where that's covered on page 264 of 532? Is it just in this table or are mobile classrooms mentioned somewhere else?
No, mobile classrooms are just in that one table.
Okay, great.
If I could follow up on your first question, I read through it. I think it is unclear the way it's worded currently, so I'll just make a change that makes it clear that any increase in residential density has to come back before council.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, good. I would, at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem. I have a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith will do a roll call vote to close the public hearing, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
Okay, we're scheduled to take action on this on May 11th. Do any council members want to have any further discussion on any of these items at this time or have any questions for staff? Just a quick question for staff. Given the way it's written now, the mobile classroom special-use permit would go away if it is approved as written?
Correct. Right. It would be permitted. They would not have to come before council.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for the public. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawson. Appreciate your help on that.
Thank you.
Item 10. There is one action item on tonight's agenda, a resolution appointing Citizen Advisory Committee members. Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will facilitate the item. Mr. Smith?
All right. And Erin, could we go ahead and scroll to the resolution? Thank you very much. Good afternoon, mayor and members of council. Through the initial balloting process completed on April 20th, and a runoff ballot for the Morrisville Smart City Steering Committee completed today, council was able to successfully select all outstanding appointees to fill the vacancies related to this recruitment cycle. Two recently vacated positions do still remain, one on the Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee and another on the Planning and Zoning Board. These vacancies can be filled during a future or special recruitment cycle at council discretion. The applicants selected for appointment during this recruitment cycle are as follows, and they're also presented on the resolution in front of you on your screens. The Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee, Benad Bata, RT Chander, and Robin Karkey. The Morrisville Smart City Steering Committee, Ragapathi Durasami. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, Elizabeth Dan and Jack Johnson. The Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, Ram Pudel. The Public Safety Advisory Committee, Hemanashu Desai and Renee McCoy. The Senior Advisory Committee, Lauren Butler, Karen Davis, and Michael Holland. Tonight, council is asked to vote to appoint these applicants to terms that will begin on May 3rd, 2021, and expire on May 2, 2023. I'll open the floor for any questions.
Do any council members have any questions? Is there a motion on Resolution 2021-154-0?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion. Protem Johnson?
I'll second the motion.
I'll have a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith, if you can facilitate a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2021-154-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and I'm comfortable saying on all our behalves, thank you everyone who applied, and please stay involved and engaged. Most of our meetings are now allowed online, and you can always contribute to any of these committees through emails and through discussing things with those groups. So, thank you all, everyone. There are two administrative reports tonight, a Morrisville-Cary border realignment project update and a Morrisville Community Park Phase 3 update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions on either of these items? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to number 12. We have one presentation tonight, a sidewalk project reprioritization presentation. Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer, will make the presentation.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, Mark Spanioli, Town Engineer. I was just looking here. I'm trying to figure out how do I go from slide to slide? Is that somebody?
The train?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so, this evening is basically a follow-up to the council retreat we had in February. We went ahead and took back all of your feedback and comments, and we went through the current criteria, and we worked it in a way that I think, well, certainly reshuffled the prioritization ranking and provided a different ranking order for the last 10 sidewalk segments that we looked at in February. But let's go through the details now. So, tonight, like I said, we're going to review the sidewalk criteria. We're going to look at our recommended revisions to the criteria, and we'll see how that also provided a different ranking order for the sidewalks that were listed and shown in February. So, just a quick overview, not to spend a lot of time. This is our current criteria, our sidewalk criteria. Generally, we have a very objective category distribution in the criteria. The major criteria areas are area density, constructability of the sidewalks, connectivity, safety, traffic counts. I will point out a couple things here. Office and commercial were weighted equally with residential, so there's something that we looked at closely. A strong number of points were also given to public facility connection, which we also took a look at, and we saw that there was some subjectivity in the final item regarding resident requests in the current criteria. So, during the retreat, there was a number of comments and feedback that came back. Some of it was particular with residential and commercial. We heard that there should be a higher priority or a higher emphasis on residential versus commercial, so we took that into consideration. There was also some comments about bundling the segments. It made sense if you had two or three segments along the same street, even though they were separated, it was good to get the economies of scale, put those together. And also, you mentioned the Morrisville Community Park, the sidewalk that leads to the park. Maybe that could be pulled out and done as a separate project, which I think we've already talked about here with council. So, our recommended new criteria, we took the feedback and we made the following changes, and we did clean up a few of the categories. For example, the area density when it comes to residential density and commercial density, we actually split that into two criteria segments, increasing the number of points that you could get for if you were in a residential area, the sidewalk was in residential, and decreasing the number of points that you can get if you're in a commercial zone. We also added new points criteria for multiple segments in the same corridor. That way, you know, if you had economies of scale and you had multiple segments, you can get more points there. It also created like a bundling effect in the criteria, so if you had, you know, one segment that got higher points and there were other pieces, let's say, along Louis Stevens that got lower points, they'd become bundled and move up the ranks. Like I said, we decreased points for commercial areas and also connections to public facilities, and we removed the section regarding citizen requests to eliminate subjectivity. So, on this slide here... and there were other pieces, let's say along Lewis Stevens, that got lower points, they'd become bundled and move up the ranks. Like I said, we decreased points for commercial areas and also connections to public facilities. And we removed the section regarding citizen requests to eliminate subjectivity. So on this slide here, what we have is actually, this is an excerpt from the policy itself that was adopted in 2015. And what we've done is we made what we think are the recommended changes, and you'll see in the next slide where that takes us. But in general, the things I've highlighted in green relate to areas where we've increased points. Yellow indicates areas where we've decreased points. And the blue sections are new criteria, again, connectivity to sidewalks in residential and commercial areas, and points for bundled segments. Those are the new criteria areas. So ultimately, this is the rank revision based on the policy changes that we're recommending. So what you can see here is that, for example, all the Lewis Stevens projects, they moved up to the top of the ranking and were bundled together. NC 54 projects bundled together. And then you have the remaining sort of commercial industrial areas that fell towards the bottom. And actually, International Drive was already, those two were always bottom-ranked anyway. So, one of the things that happened here also was that we pulled out Morrisville Community Park. We're going to be bringing that to you on the fiscal '22 budget as a standalone project. And as I mentioned, you know, you can see how things got bundled together here. So this is the recommended ranking based on the criteria of policy changes. So what are our next steps? If the council is comfortable with these changes, we'll bring back a formal policy update at the May 11th council meeting as a consent agenda item, basically. So, I'm happy to look it over in more detail. If you had any specific questions, I'm happy to entertain them for you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, a fabulous job because by changing those criterias, especially the residential and commercial, you know, I had asked last time because everything was good, but none of the residentials were getting up to higher rank. I think you guys did a great job. Kudos for that. And looking forward for like consolidated recommendation. I think we, it'll be golden. But also, I wanted to circle back. The walkway, correct me, I'm trying to recollect, especially on Church Street connecting from Macramin to the Church Street Park. It goes through our property, right? And then I think we asked, like, how do we go about putting a sidewalk? Our temporary, you know, Mayor also mentioned like some way that we can walk because those properties are ours. Any traction on that?
Yes, Councilmember. I believe there was some discussion at a prior council meeting. I don't know if...
So Councilmember Garamella, when you received the FAQ document from the council retreat, there is a section in that document that specifically addressed the questions related to that segment and how it is tied into the DOT project, and what the timing is on that versus the timing of what we could do, as well as the cost involved with attempting to pull it out. And the short answer to that is that none of that makes logical sense from a timing or a financial standpoint, so it will remain included with the NC 54 project. And our conversation with them is that, excuse me, the Church Street, sorry, wrong project. Church Street probably would be better to keep the sidewalk on Church Street for Church Street. But that we'll keep that together with that project, and that we have talked with DOT, and that they are open to prioritizing that as one of the first segments of Church Street to be done.
Awesome. I just wanted to ensure that's not lost in the weeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella asked my question.
Okay, great. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So, Mark, thank you for all the work you did on this, and you did capture a lot of the comments from council. And when you, and I know when you move this around and increase points in one place, you got to take them from somewhere else. So, I'm not asking, I think, for a change right now, but I, I'm concerned and would follow up in the years to come. But I'm concerned with the connectivity to existing network, where we talk about worn path. And a worn path is a really good piece of data. It's an important data point, which says that people really want a sidewalk here.
Right.
And we reduced that from 15 points to five. I think where you say the no worn path, no pedestrian at one point, I don't have an issue with that. I might even make that zero.
Right.
But to reduce the worn path, the evidence that a sidewalk is needed from 15 to five kind of concerns me. And I realize there's a push and pull here, but if there's anything we can do, or like I said, I would ask that we evaluate this moving forward and then make changes to this if that becomes an issue.
Yeah, we can certainly look that over before we bring it over to the council at the next council meeting. I'll see if there's something we can do to get the points in line with that, if everyone feels comfortable with that.
Well, I'd like to hear from others, too. I agree with you. I'm the only one that said anything, so we need to hear from others.
Understood.
Was there anything else, Mayor Protem?
No, but I'd like to hear from others. I mean, this is important.
I would support that reinstating some of those points to the worn path. I know universities use that before they put in sidewalks, for example.
Sure.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi, and then Councilmember Rao on this issue.
Yeah, so I agree 100% with Mayor Protem Johnson. I would support that. You know, I think, Mark, that when you rearrange criteria and the results turn out to be exactly what they should be and indicate things that we should be prioritizing, I think that's how you know you've done a good job, and I think that you've done a really good job here. I'm really happy with the placement of all the items, actually. So I think this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao, and then Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
I'm in favor of Mayor Protem's position.
Okay. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
I would like to say that I really do like the revised criteria because it is very important that we connect our neighborhoods together so that we can not only walk in our own town, but we can walk to RTP, and we can walk to, you know, other parts of the Cary Greenways, and ultimately to Lake Crabtree. So seeing that, we've reprioritized an area that has been disconnected for some time in the Breckenridge area. I'm really pleased about it because now we'll be able to move people around much easier. And I hope to see some movement in the informal paths, or at least see people want to move about a little bit more easily as we design these new connections. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, would you like to share your thoughts on the issue of the worn path?
So can you give me an example of which one it is? I just wanted to analyze that. I understand what it is, but in our present town, which ones are those?
I'm not entirely sure. Councilmember Garamella, I'm not entirely sure if any of the last 10 happen to be at a location where there's a worn path. I have to double-check, but I mean, basically, it means if there's an area where you can see that people have been walking, you know, and the grass is worn out there, and you can tell that there's been some movement, then it makes sense that people are sort of like begging for a sidewalk there. So I think that's the idea. I'm not sure if any of the last 10 happen to have that circumstance, but I'm happy to look at it. And Mike, that tells me that even if I raise the points in this category, it may not change the ranking that's currently in front of you. So it might just be for future, you know, possibilities at this point.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's the only place I know is, I've shown Martha, the intersection between Redwood and Delorando. You know, people, there's no connectivity, so they just walk on the sidewalk, like on grass, literally. But other than that, yeah, I, that's the reason I was asking. You know, I know we are reducing the points, but at the same time, I wanted to understand, you know, which paths they were.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I think there might be some also on McCrimmon going towards Davis.
Yeah.
With some sidewalk ups there. I think I've noted that. Mayor Protem? So I think we have support for your motion. Staff will bring that back. Do you have anything else that you want to share? Okay.
No, and just to clarify, I'm pleased with the ranking list that we have in front of us as well. I want to echo what Councilmember Rabadi said. I think this is kind of what we, at least what I was, the last time we talked about this, was making reference to. So it did, it did, the criteria came out the way it should, quite frankly, and I think I'm happy with it as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just share a few thoughts. I appreciate all the hard work that went into adjusting our prioritization criteria, and especially appreciate the elevation of the Morrisville Community Park sidewalk from a connectivity and safety perspective. So that's an example where our criteria was not quite meeting our needs, so we sort of stepped in and used that as an input to move forward. And there's also the opportunity to do the counter, which in this case, I want to share my perspective about the NC 54D as in dog section from Key Bridge to Aviation. I believe that that's, as is noted in one of your bullets, maybe best delayed until we have more progress on our NC 54 widening in general.
Agreed.
And essentially, the interchange at Aviation will be changing significantly in the near term. And when the road is widened, I believe a sidewalk, or better yet, a side path alongside the two new lanes to the north of the existing lanes will be how we address the non-motorized connectivity along that stretch of road in the future. So any current project alongside or enhancing the current bridge, I think, might be prohibitively expensive and will be unusable at build-out. So...
Yeah, agreed. And I apologize for not making a note about that because I did have it as one of my bullet points. It is our recommendation to pull that one out and wait till the bridge is widened.
Okay, so when it comes back on the 11th, that won't be included in this list?
Well, on the 11th, what we'll be bringing back to you is actually just the criteria, to adopt the criteria. The ranking, unless something were to change based on the input, would stay just like this. And then we'll just always have a note that NC 54D would likely, if it's our recommendation and the council's comfortable with that, we would pull it out of the, you know, a sequence until the DOT built the bridge.
Okay, so right now, we're just approving the prioritization criteria, and the ranking will come back before us, before...
Correct.
Things are expended and stuff.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I wasn't positive. Okay, looking for other questions or discussion on this? So it sounds like it might still be on the consent agenda. We can always pull it if we're unhappy with what you guys come back with.
Absolutely.
Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay, so that's the plan. Thank you very much, Mr. Spanioli and staff, for bringing this forward. It's been a couple of years in the making. I think we're really getting it on track.
We're right there. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Right now, at item 13. Monday, May 3rd, at Town Hall from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m., and then Wednesday, May 5th, at the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center from 2:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m., residents are invited to attend these in-person events to learn more about what is involved in the bond referendum and to share their input. As the town works towards the next phase of formally adopting the bond categories that will appear on the ballot in November, these events will be held in a socially-distanced environment with COVID-19 protocols strictly enforced. Please save the date for our annual Spring Fest. In keeping with the spirit of Spring Fest's past, the town will shut down Town Hall Drive and offer food trucks and entertainment on Saturday, May 15th, from 2:00 till 6:00 p.m. All activities will be modified and socially-distanced to comply with current COVID-19 restrictions. The town is introducing a new element to this year's celebration. Residents can take part in either a virtual 5K or virtual seven-mile race. Visit the town website and follow our social media accounts for more information. As always, for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. At this time, we're going to move on to council comments. I'll recognize council comments, council members to make comments at this time. We'll start with Councilmember Garamella, followed by myself.
No comments, Mayor, but I just wanted to let you know I want to thank each one of you for your help that I got elected to North Carolina League of Municipalities as a board of directors. So I want to thank, and looking forward, how I can contribute towards it and how I can take Morrisville to the new level. Thank you.
Great, yes. Congratulations on your service, continued service on the board for North Carolina League of Municipalities. We really appreciate it. I would like to thank Kimberly Conlee, Kyle Cooper, and numerous other staff for planning and executing a very successful Green Day drive-through event and litter and stream cleans this past weekend. I was glad to see so many hybrid and electric vehicles being used by our residents and their excitement to be taking positive steps to be good stewards of our environment. I'd like to also welcome Apple to the Triangle. We are proud that our region's focus on high-quality education from pre-K to college and beyond, and our local efforts, which make Morrisville the 10th best place to live in America, helped Apple leadership choose RTP for their newest campus. An even better eye future for all of us is on the way. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 28th, Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, in partnership with Wake County, is hosting a vaccination clinic for anyone 18 years of age or older. As of this evening, there are still appointment times available. The link to sign up Genius Registration can be located on my social media accounts and other places. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson for her comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I really didn't have a lot of comments this evening except for "Welcome, Apple", and we look forward to seeing the transformation. Being a neighbor of the new Apple campus, we hope that some of the infrastructure money comes to Morrisville either through state, county, or direct through town funding. So, thank you and welcome.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yes, I'd just like to welcome, to echo that "Welcome, Apple". I'm thrilled that Apple's coming, and I think it's going to be a very, very positive thing for Morrisville. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
So, I'll try not to repeat, but I do want to thank all of the organizations that have held COVID-19 vaccination events over the last couple of weeks. The Nepalese Center of North Carolina, the Hindu Society of North Carolina, Shiloh Baptist Church, and of course, BAPs recently, BAPs, the Hindu temple, recently also had a vaccine clinic. So I just want to thank all of them personally for all the work they are doing for our community and making sure that their members and membership are also receiving vaccinations. So thank you to all of them. Also want to say Happy Nepalese Day to the Nepalese community who had a very nice socially-distanced event, very low-key compared to what they do every year, but pleased to be able to start attending events in person. So I want to thank the Nepal Center of North Carolina for that. Also want to thank council, or congratulate Councilmember Garamella for his appointment to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors. Thank you, Satish, for your service to the citizens of Morrisville, but also for all of North Carolina. The board deals with many issues that are important for the residents of North Carolina, so I appreciate your service, Satish, and congratulate you. And also want to say thank you to Erin Hudson for her efforts with the joint meeting some of us on council had with our state legislators last Friday. It was all done virtually, and she led a great meeting. There, as we've talked about before, there are bills that are going through the General Assembly now. Some may make it and some may not, but some are important to follow because they affect what we do here in the town of Morrisville. And as we all know, the General Assembly has great sway over the authorities that we are given as a council and as a staff in the town of Morrisville. So, thank you, Erin, for your efforts on following some of these bills that, and this is my word, could be detrimental to our citizens and to our residents in Morrisville. So I'm glad we had some of our state leaders there to hear our concerns, and I know that they are going to be great advocates for us here in Morrisville. So, thank you for setting up that meeting, and that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations again to Satish. He'll do a great job, as always. And first of all, much of my, a lot of points have already been made, but I'm going to add a couple of other points. I wanted to, first of all, remind everyone that the Virtual Academy registration is open until May 2nd. So if you're in Wake County schools, you still have the opportunity for that. I want to thank the Morrisville Chamber for their membership drive, very successful. I was enjoying participating in that. And we did have a great Green Day. I want to end with just a couple of insights on Apple and its impact on Morrisville, but I did want to say just a quick word about what's going on in India. I know that Councilmember Garamella has been also comforting many people in the community, but it's a COVID hell right now in India with over 16 million cases and 2,000 people dying. but it's a COVID hell right now in India with over 16 million cases and 2,000 people dying a day. There's many people living in Morrisville and Cary and around North Carolina who come from India who either have a father, a mother, a brother, sister, son, or daughter, granddaughter. And so whatever we can do as a council and a town, a couple of ideas would be, you know, working to maybe look at some nonprofits and charities. One is the BAPS Charities Organization. If you can just go to bapscharities.org, you can contribute, if you're listening to this, to help India with feet on the ground, to get supplies, medical supplies. And President Biden is working on, has already announced with Secretary, National Security Advisor Jake Sullivan, that they're going to be providing raw materials to India to manufacture the vaccine. So there'll be other things that are coming down the pike, but because such a large population of ours is from India, I feel like, you know, it's just a really sad day, and we have to do everything we can. Second thing, before I talk about Apple, is I recently served on the task force for the League on race and equity, and so it was a great experience, and I'm going to take the report and share it with the council. I think I walked away with some really great ideas on things that we can do at the local level here in Morrisville to help promote inclusivity and address and continue to bring up the conversation of race and addressing these concerns. And the final thing with Apple, a couple of thoughts. I see a couple of, you know, obviously, infrastructure is the big problem in Morrisville with roads and schools, and, but I see some great opportunities. One is affordable housing. The mayor of Austin has warned the mayors of North Carolina that we should really look at affordable housing as something that Austin did very well. So there's an opportunity for us to have more workforce housing that can recruit, you know, people to not only work here but live in Morrisville, and I think that's going to be good for our economy. Accelerating the needs for commuter rail and transit. So I was quite encouraged that some of the DOT officials and Go Triangle are talking about accelerating commuter rail to Garner and Raleigh. And the final thing is the connection to innovation and entrepreneurship. So working with our chamber, maybe connecting with our smart city initiatives as these big companies, companies come in. And the 112 million for transportation fund that was mentioned and the 100 million for schools really got me thinking. And so for the citizens out there that have been concerned about, you know, you know, we approve development or we have companies, it really got me thinking about what we as elected leaders can do across the state, pushing more aggressively for public-private partnerships. And so I'd like us to explore, maybe down the road, that 100 million for schools. Where does the money go? Could it go to school construction? How is it divvied up? I guess those are questions that maybe our educational committee can look at. So sorry to go over my time, but this is a great win for North Carolina, and I think it's a great opportunity for Morrisville and the Triangle. So congratulations. Thank you.
And Mayor Pretam was very humble in not noting that she served many years on the North Carolina League of Municipalities as our district representative, and it's nice that Satish will be now assuming that role and making sure Morrisville has a seat at that table. So thank you very much for all your service. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mayor, I'm sorry, Town Manager Page for any staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Ben Howell to give a quick, well, probably less than a quick, but an update on our Smart Shuttle and be available to answer any questions. It's, there's lots of details there.
Good evening, council. Just to provide a quick update, as you know, we've been working very hard on the Smart Shuttle moving forward. I am, unfortunately, I do have to say that we are not going to be able to launch in June like we were hoping to. We were moving forward with that plan, and things just haven't quite aligned. So we don't know exactly when the launch will be, but we, I just did want to go ahead and give you a heads-up that we will not be launching in June. It will be hopefully soon after, but we hope to have a more firm date for you within the next few weeks.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Howell on that? Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So, thank you, Ben, for the update, and I appreciate that we'll know more in a couple of weeks. Can you give us some kind of idea how long it's going to be delayed? Are we talking a month or two, six months, a year? What, just give me a ballpark. I won't hold you to it, I promise.
Less than six months.
Okay.
So at this time, we're not real certain. As you'll notice, we'll be bringing the operating agreement with Go Cary to you. We're planning to bring that to you on June 8th, and by that point, we should know more information and be, should hopefully have a start date by that point, but we're not certain yet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has a comment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Yes, thank you. I have been telling lots of neighbors in Morrisville that we are getting a shuttle and it's going to be on-demand, and they are very excited about the prospect of moving people around and finding new ways to get from point A to point B. So I am also very interested in knowing how delayed this would be. I mean, I can imagine that some of it might be due to COVID and concerns about COVID, but we still need to understand how people move about our area and across the region. So as soon as you do know, please share it. And my other question for you is, will there be a fee for people that do ride this on-demand pilot? Or is that going to be free so that we can encourage participation?
The service will be fare-free.
Fare-free, very good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I imagine that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is correct that some of the delays are due to COVID, but could you elaborate on the reasons for the delays?
There's, there's actually a myriad of reasons. We're, we've had some delay with getting the agreement put in place and, of course, bringing that to y'all. There's been, you know, delays related to making sure we get all the nodes, whatever node construction we need, get that in place. We appear to be on schedule at this point, but, you know, we're still working towards getting that construction underway, and it's just, there's a lot of moving parts to it. So it's, we've been actively working on it and have been working very closely with Go Cary, and it's unfortunately just one of those things that with trying to start up a new service, sometimes these things happen, but we're working very hard to try and get it, and we do not expect a long delay, but we did want to go ahead and let you know as soon as we did that, you know, it looks unlikely in June, but we're working to get more details and get a start date nailed down.
Is there anything you think that we could do to help you as a council?
Not at this time, but thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I agree and acknowledge what Benjamin said, like their staff is working very hard. Breckage does get a stop, so we got all the documents for that, for having access to them. But also, like I was thinking back of my head, is this is an excellent opportunity, Ben. You know, you can, you can go talk to Apple, and if they give us, you know, an Apple kind of cars or, you know, like electric vehicles, we can advertise that and have a stop there too. Just kidding, but I think the opportunities are there where we can collaborate, being so close. So I was talking to Commissioner Adamson just right before this call, and they are doing a lot of press conferences over the next several weeks so that they keep that in the news. So I think we should partner to see, you know, what we can get out of it. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for this update, and will June 8th be when we next hear from you on this item then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for your help. Really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Town Manager Page, was there any other staff updates at this time? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're scheduled to take a break. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but why don't we go ahead and take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 7:16, please? Thank you. Thank you very much, that was a nice break. At this time, we'll have Brendan Zudema, our Assistant Town Manager, facilitate the next discussion. Mr. Zudema?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have with us on the remote call Eric Thomas from DFI, who we all have met on several occasions. I am going to turn it over to him shortly to walk through this presentation with you. Just kind of want to give you an update on where we've been and where we are tonight. So as you will recall, last fall, you gave us authorization to issue a request for proposals, which we did in November. Subsequent to that, both town staff and DFI proactively reached out to try to identify partners and interested developers that might want to submit. That went on for a number of weeks. The deadline came at the end of February, and we did receive three proposals for this Town Center Core Demonstration Project. We're very excited about that. After receiving those three proposals, they have been reviewed by DFI staff. They have also been reviewed by a team of Morrisville staff that have gone through them. And then Eric and I did a number of reference check calls as well on these development teams. So with that and the feedback from all of those groups, Eric and his team have put together this presentation tonight. I will tell you, I think he has done a really, really good job in making this very understandable and sort of comparing, I don't know if it's apples and oranges, but it's definitely three different brands of apples in terms of what the proposals are. But they've done a really good job, I think, that will help you to sort of see what the similarities and perhaps some of the differences are. Again, would remind you that tonight, we are not seeking any action from you. This is an informational session. At the end, we will talk about next steps and where our recommended goal would be. But again, no actions tonight, just information and Q and A, and then depending on where that is, we will figure out next steps. But with that, Mayor, if you're okay, I'm going to turn it over to Eric and let him start his presentation. Eric?
Hello. Good to be here tonight and glad to present and happy to present this information to you all. It's been a long road getting to some proposals from developers for the first phase of the Town Center Core. We're excited to share our analysis of the three proposals that we've received for the Town Center Core first phase. Can someone just make sure, let me know that they're seeing the slide deck move forward?
Yeah, you're good, Eric.
Cool, thanks, George. Great, great. So tonight, we're going to walk through the Solicitation of Development Partners Process overview, as Brendan has called it, also commonly referred to as Request for Proposals, just so we don't kind of get confused with our thinking here. The identification of the development teams that responded, the evaluation of the proposals, as Brendan mentioned, we're going to try to do our best to do sort of the apples-to-apples comparison of all three proposals that we received. And then a summary of next steps, what we see as the potential next steps to help inform and allow you all to make an informed decision on who to move forward for negotiations for the Town Center Core. Okay, great. So here's where we are tonight. Tonight, we need that red dot in the due diligence period. As Brendan mentioned, the developer solicitation period was from November through February of 2021.
Just a second, I'm sorry. It's moved on my screen, but for some reason, it's not moved. There it goes. Okay.
Is there a delay?
It seems to be a little one, but you're up there now with the timeline.
Okay, okay. I'll move slow through each slide, make sure that they transfer over for you all. So where we are tonight is that red dot in the due diligence period of evaluating developers' responses. Ultimately, it would be the goal of the town to select a preferred partner to begin negotiations with, moving into a development agreement, and ultimately, construction for the first phase of the Town Center Core. You can see the colors are sort of darker orange with a lighter orange. There's room for these timelines to either extend or contract based on length of time it takes for negotiation. So obviously, we have a timeline on the screen, but there is the chance that either the negotiations can be either extended or shortened based on what we're, how we're working with a preferred developer. I wanted to go over guiding public interest. Did the slide shift or transfer over to y'all?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, okay, good. New development on these sites. So these are the guiding public interests that were endorsed by council as part of the solicitation package that helped inform the development community when evaluating their responses to essentially say, here is what the town of Morrisville hopes to achieve with their Town Center Core. And these are, again, the sort of a measuring stick of how we evaluate, and both the DFI and the town staff evaluated the responses of those developers. So one is the new development on the Town Center Core of these sites should, one, integrate higher-density residential, office, retail, and civic facilities, create a vibrant, walkable town center. Two was create a mix of uses for town center that complements the existing quality of life and character of the town. Three was leverage recent and planned public investment to attract private investment. Four was preserve Morrisville's historic crossroads architecture in small-town feel. Five was link existing communities with town center via greenways, trails, sidewalks, and parks. And six was establish recreation and open spaces for community gatherings, cultural events, and the farmer's market. So these were the guiding public interests.
Our screens are lagging. Stopped at bullet two here in the council chamber.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure what happened.
Huh. Sorry. I have a lot of animations, so I believe it's probably going to be lagging.
No, it is, it is okay for online people.
It's just lagging within the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just lagging in the chamber. I'm keeping pace.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, that.
Well, we also have the, staff sent us the presentation. You can follow it on your laptop, too. I don't know whether...
We may need to switch back to driving off of the one that's here, Eric.
Yeah, I'd say let's do that. We did, we did have one modification that I will address when we get to the slides. So maybe it's best that way because, just to prevent the lag from slowing down the conversation.
Why don't you stop sharing your screen, Eric?
All right, let's go to that.
Thank you.
Sorry about the technical difficulties here.
It's right around page 500, I think.
So are we going to reshare the presentation so the public can see it too, or?
Yes, that's what we're working on now.
Okay.
All right, have you all got that now? Okay. I'm sorry.
Should I request control now to?
Yeah, try that.
Go to move through this slide? Okay. Apologize for this. Might be a slowdown on my internet here at home. Can everyone see the guiding public interests?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So these were the guiding public interests that were established as part of the, in the early phases of the Town Center Core planning process to essentially establish what you all would like to achieve with the Town Center Core development. I'll walk through them again quickly because they're very important as measuring sticks for how we evaluated the developers' responses. So new development on these sites should, one, integrate higher-density residential, office, retail, and civic facilities to create a vibrant, walkable town center. Two is create a mix of uses for town center that complements the existing quality of life and character of the town. Three was leverage recent and planned public investment to attract private investment. Four was preserve Morrisville's historic crossroads architecture in small-town feel. Five was link it. Five was link existing communities with town center via greenways, trails, sidewalks, and parks. And six was establish recreation, open spaces for community gatherings, cultural events, and the farmer's market. So the Solicitation Development Program Partnership, the public participation, as stated within the solicitation document, stated that the public would sell the land, the town of Morrisville would sell the land at fair market value, would build necessary road infrastructure, would construct stormwater offsite, and would financially participate in parking infrastructure. The solicitation also stated that flexibility is provided for developers to propose a program, density, and site design different than what was included in the solicitation. The solicitation concept plan that was incorporated into the document was to evaluate a financial model and understand what potential public participation may be asked in terms of financial participation, but was stated clearly as not the final concept plan that would need to be developed for the first phase. The program that was incorporated into the Solicitation of Development Partners was just over 200 residential multifamily units, 15 townhomes on Block B facing Jeremiah Street, 36,000 square feet of office, just north of 30,000 square feet of retail space, and 390 parking spaces in a deck and on a surface lot, plus parking on the street. Let me see, should I move this to full screen, or is this good enough here for everyone to see?
I think this is good enough.
Okay, okay. And public open space, as part of the first phase within the solicitation document, there was no acreage of public open space. The town green, as drawn up in the land use plan, is identified in a different area of the Town Center Core area. So there was no public open space as dedicated within the first phase of the Town Center Core. The solicitation process, the solicitation was released, as Brendan and I mentioned earlier, in November of 2020. It was distributed widely. DFI, we directly engaged, that was conversations, emails, over 60 qualified development groups that have experience doing mixed-use development. It was posted on the town and DFI websites. It was distributed to other professional service providers in real estate development, architects, general contractors, brokers, so that they could relay this information to their potential clients that they work with. And there was also an article published in TBJ in December of 2020, highlighting the project and the opportunity. DFI, we were available throughout the process to provide more information to developers that expressed interest, as well as talk through potential site requirements, solicitation requirements, and/or the public interest associated with the project. DFI and the Morrisville Town Staff Review Committee that was established for the project evaluated the responses of the development teams based on, one, did they align with the guiding public interest associated with the Town Center Core? Two, were they qualified? Have they done similar projects like this in the past? Do these development teams have experience with public-private partnerships? What are the references of these development teams? As Brendan mentioned, Brendan and I had conversations with reference projects that were stated from the development teams to see how they've worked with other communities for previous projects. Could the development team align with the timeline associated with the solicitation? And what is the feasibility in terms of the site and financial feasibility asked of the developer? So can they accommodate a program in the site? And can they respond to the financial asks within the public participation of the solicitation? So we got, as Brendan mentioned, we have three responses, three qualified groups that responded to the solicitation document for Phase One. The first one is Casto Development, the second is JRL Real Estate Company, and the third is Sing Development. And I'm going to walk through each of the three proposals later on, but these are the three that we received listed by the lead developer. It's important that, as Brendan mentioned, we tried our best to do an apples-to-apples comparison of the development proposals in that each of the respondents had a different concept plan for the first phase of the Town Center Core. So what we did, each of the development groups had commonalities regarding their proposed public participation. One was the town would finance a publicly-owned parking garage. The town would provide access or lease spaces to the private development within the garage. The town would sell the land under the private development path to the development team upon close of construction financing. So once they got the project financed, they would purchase the property. And if the town would build the road infrastructure to support the development. The two development groups, and we'll get into this in a little bit, that proposed, the town, the town green, being part of the first phase, proposed that the town would fund that space and the developer would build it in coordination with their first phase. So what DFI also did in evaluating the development proposals was, each of the development teams was asked what the cost estimates would be for certain components of the development project. That was including some of the public investment components associated with each of the development proposals, the parking deck, the town green, street infrastructure. What we did in terms of, in attempting to get an apples-to-apples comparison, was apply standards across each of the three proposals in terms of these publicly-funded development components and apply cost estimates to those. So for the parking deck, we applied a $25,000 per space estimate for the parking deck. For the town green, $1.5 million per acre, and for road infrastructure, $1,500 per linear foot. It's important to note here that these numbers, based on the fact that each of the proposals associated these as town-funded, will be determined by the town in terms of what you all would prefer in terms of design, programming, you know, level of materiality for each of these items. So we felt it only fair to apply that standard cost across all three of the proposals. So with the sort of background of how we evaluated the respondents, I'm going to get into each of the three proposals now. So we're going to start with Casto. Casto is the lead development team. They are headquartered out of Columbus, Ohio, with offices in Cary. They've been around a long time. The firm was founded in 1926. The architect associated with the development team is Dynamic Design, and they identify Gray Star as property management group. The three projects on the right side of the slide, Park West Village, you all are very familiar with. Casto has developed Park West Village, a mixed-use retail center in Morrisville. The Grove in Snellville, Georgia, is a public-private partnership with the town of Snellville for a mixed-use town center that incorporates a public library, public parking, and mixed-use components. And another project highlighted was Southern Post, which was led by Dynamic Design, the architecture firm. Casto's Phase One proposal, outlined in yellow on this concept plan here, calls for 260 multifamily residential units, no townhomes, no office, 30,000 square feet of retail, approximately 5,000 square feet here on Block A, and roughly 25,000 square feet of retail on this other development pad here. 856 parking spaces spread across a 400-space parking deck, surface lots, and on the street. 1,700 linear feet of new roads, and 1.4 acre public open space. And that's what I'm highlighting here is the town green along Town Hall Drive and Carolina Street extension here, the town green, about 1.4 acres, that's sort of the gateway into the town center. You'll notice that this concept plan does not incorporate Block B in Phase One. So they decided to anchor on Block A and then also shift a second development block here to face the town green. Worth noting also is the 25,000 square feet of retail has residential units above it facing the town green. So Casto proposed public participation. The town would fund a publicly-owned parking deck, 400 spaces. The town would purchase all the ground floor commercial space at just about $8 million. The town would provide parking deck spaces to the developer for residential and retail uses. The developer would contribute to the operating expenses of the deck. The town would sell the land to the development team at $690,000 per acre. The town would fund the development of the town green, 1.4 acres, and the town would fund the new roads, approximately 1,700 linear feet for Phase One. When looking at the financial impact of Casto's proposal, the total private investment for that proposal is just above $50 million, 50.5 million. The public investment in parking, 400-space parking deck, when we apply the DFI estimate of $25,000 per space, is a $10 million parking deck. The public investment in the town green, 1.4 acres at $1.5 million per acre, is just over $2 million, 2.1 million. Public investments in roads, 2.6 million. The public investment in retail space, 8.05 million. The proposed land purchase price, so Casto proposed purchasing the land that they need under the private development path for 3.25 million. When you look at the net total potential public investment, that's the proposed public investments minus the sale of the land, you're looking at 19.5 million for Phase One, with an estimated incremental real estate tax to the town of 3.6 million. And that's over 20 years. That's assuming 36 cents per $100 valuation of total private investment. What I do want to note, that's not showing up on this slide, is that Casto, with the town owning the retail space, would be in charge of leasing that space and generating income off of that space. We estimated at a $20 per square foot rental rate, 90% occupancy, $5.50 operating expenses per square foot, that that net operating income for that retail space would be approximately $375,000 per year that the town could generate off of the retail space upon stabilization of the retail space. So that's something that's missing from this slide that I had on my PowerPoint, but happy to share that with you after this, that I want to make sure to incorporate that the town would be generating income off the retail space within their proposal. The proposal details, I wanted to do a couple highlights and considerations. Highlights, up to 10% of the units proposed within Casto's 260 multifamily residential units, up to 10% would be proposed for workforce housing at 80% of the area meeting income. They proposed establishing a mix of uses in the first phase, 30,000 square feet of retail space, and that they are a local development team that has experience with mixed-use projects and public-private partnerships. Considerations, they did incorporate the town green with community gathering and performance space in Phase One, that's town-funded. The town would also, would be responsible for purchasing, leasing, and operating the retail space. So that was sort of outside of the original solicitation, but they, you know, the town did state that they had a willingness to entertain office for the space, but that was what Casto proposed. And that the town, the proposal also relies on the town acquiring the remaining privately-owned parcels within the Town Center Core before initiating Phase One, which is 16 parcels and five and a half acres of property. Moving on, and we'll have plenty of time for questions and discussion at the end of this presentation, so I just want to make sure that, please prep your questions for that time. I think that would make the most sense. JRL Real Estate Company, the second proposal. JRL Real Estate Company is a master development group made up of Monarch Property Company, Lee Norris, who's experienced with another development firm, and Rams Business Consulting. And they identified a joint venture partner of Park Grove Realty. They're headquartered in Raleigh, North Carolina, and they have formed in 2021 to pursue this project, but each of those individual development firms have over 15 years of development experience. The architect they identified as part of their team is Clear Scapes, and for property management, TBD moving forward. A few of their highlight projects they included within their package was Transfer Company. It's a mixed-use event venue, co-working, food hall with townhomes that was developed by Monarch Property. The Ramsey is a multifamily development in Durham, North Carolina. It's under construction currently, expected to open in 2022. And the Grove in Durham, North Carolina, is a townhome development near downtown Durham that is a phased townhome development near the downtown core of Durham. JRL's Phase One proposal included 252 multifamily units, 59 townhomes, and those are on Jeremiah Street, facing Jeremiah, with an avenue running between them that are, have parking, parking spaces allocated within each of the townhomes to satisfy the parking needed for the townhomes. 28,000 square feet of office, that's on Block A on levels two and three of this orange building on Block A. 46,500 square feet of retail, that's 14,000 square feet in this orange building on Block A, and roughly 32,500 square feet of space in this development block facing the town green here, which I'll talk about in a minute. They incorporated 600 parking spaces, that's 400 within the parking deck, and then 200 spread across the street in either angled or pool and parking. And that they proposed over 2,100 linear feet of roads to support this first phase of development. And they identified and proposed a public open space, the town green, coming in Phase One at 1.75 acres. They had a unique take on the town green, creating a linear town green that essentially, once you come off the traffic circle, you would see the town green first, essentially as the heart of, they described it as the heart of the Town Center Core, with the event hall, event hall and food hall, event space and food hall facing the town green. JRL's proposed public participation for this first phase of the Town Center Core, the town would fund the publicly-owned parking deck, 400 spaces. The town would lease 189 parking spaces to the development team at a rate to be negotiated. The town would sell land to the development team at $330,000 per acre. The town would fund the development of the town green at 1.75 acres of town green. And the town would fund new roads, over 2,100 linear feet of new roads to support this first phase. With looking at the financial impact of JRL's proposal, total private investment for this first phase, 87.4 million. The public investment in parking of 400-space deck, $10 million estimate from DFI. Public investment of the green, 2.6 million. The public investment in roads, 3.2 million. JRL did not propose that the public would invest in the retail space and purchasing the retail space, so that's zero. The proposed land purchase price at $330,000 per acre is just under $2 million. And so looking at a net total potential public investment, that again is the proposed public investments minus the sale of the land, is 13.8 million. And if the estimated incremental real estate tax to the town, that is, again, the 36 cents per $100 valuation of total private investment over a 20-year period, is 6.3 million for JRL's proposal. And I do want to point out that when we talk about total private investment for JRL, that is the multifamily residential, the townhomes, the retail space, the office space, co-working, the food hall event space, and the land acquisition price, factored into that 87.4 million. So JRL's proposal details the highlights. This is established as a mix of uses in the first phase, including a food hall, event space, office, retail, and co-working space. And I should also say residential as part of that also. The food hall and event space would be accessible for community-focused meetings and events, and it's a local co-developer with destination, retail, and public-private partnership experience. Considerations, this incorporates a linear town green park in Phase One, which is town-funded. The food hall and event space proposed location and supporting roads rely on the acquisition of privately-owned parcels, so five parcels are currently privately-owned, and where the team identified the preferred location of those. They did state that they have ability to be flexible as part of their response questions, but they did locate those in that location as part of their concept plan that they felt made the most sense. And the development team proposes a joint venture partner for the multifamily component, so they are bringing in a joint venture team to execute on this first phase of the development. So moving to the third proposal that was received from Sing Development. Sing Development headquartered out of West Bloomfield, Michigan, but they have offices in Cary, North Carolina. Sing was founded in 1973. They identified Jay Davis as their architect associated with the project. Property management is TBD at this point. The reference projects they identified, the Griffin in Novi, Michigan, Sing Development, Main Center in Northville, Michigan, Sing, and then we wanted to highlight one of Jay Davis's projects, which is Smokey. Davis's projects, which is Smoky Hollow, which is occurring in Raleigh, North Carolina, that was identified within the proposal. Singh also has projects currently taking place in Cary, North Carolina also, so they do have local experience in their portfolio of development. Singh's, Singh Development's phase one proposal, they call for 206 multifamily units, again, the area in yellow is identified as the phase one concept, 206 multifamily units in the blue box on block A, 22 townhomes wrapping Foxglove, Jeremiah, and the new street. Those are four rent townhomes. They don't propose any office square footage. They call, they identify 7,400 square feet of retail space in block A, which is this front band facing Carolina Street and facing a plaza that's facing Carolina Street, 7,400 square feet of space. They call for 482 parking spaces, 374 in the parking garage here, and then a temporary surface lot on block B and other parking associated for the townhomes on block B, 700 linear feet of roads, and a .3 acre public open space here, which is that plaza that is essentially adjacent to the library in front of, facing Carolina Street, the new development along Carolina Street. I wanted to highlight here that they did call for flex retail in the future, but for phase one purposes, this will be a temporary parking lot within their proposal. The Singh proposed public participation for this project is the town funds the publicly-owned parking deck, 374 spaces. The town provides access to residential and retail uses within the deck, the developer contributes to the operating expenses of the deck. The town sells land to the development team at $890,000 per acre, and that the town funds new roads, approximately 700 linear feet to support this first phase. Singh's financial impact, the total private investment for the first phase is just under 53 million, 52.9 million. Again, applying the estimates, the standard estimates across development proposals, for 374 space parking deck, that's 9.35 million. Singh does not propose a town green as part of phase one, so that is no cost to the town at this point, but something to be considered of is that town green as part of the, as part of the town center would be a cost that the town would take on in a future phase. The public investments in the roads, 700 linear feet, just over $1 million, applying the $1,500 per linear foot estimate, so 1.1 million. Public investment in retail space, the Singh does not propose the town investing in the retail space, so zero dollars. Singh proposes purchasing the land at, for 5.25 million, again, that $890,000 per acre acquisition price, so the net total potential public investment, that's proposed public investments minus the sale of land, is 5.2 million to the town. And the estimated incremental real estate to the tax, tax to the town for 20 years is 3.8 million associated with this project. And again, that's going to be determined by Wake County also in terms of how, how that is calculated and how that is valued, but for the purposes of this assessment, we base it off the total private investment and the 36 cents per hundred dollar valuation. Singh's proposal details, Singh proposed incorporating solar panels on block A building for sustainability measures. Singh proposed develop, being the development group that funds the plaza adjacent to the library, so it's privately funded by Singh, the .3 acre plaza adjacent to the library in front of the private development. And they are a local development team, offices in Cary and local development experience and public-private partnership experience as well. Considerations, they, the first phase has 7,400 square feet of retail, so limited retail uses incorporated in phase one along Carolina Street. Block B includes a temporary surface parking lot along Carolina Street, and that the timeline to move forward with block B retail is one year after phase one is completed, so the temporary lot parking would need to be accommodated elsewhere. Singh would be, would work with the town to figure out how to accommodate the temporary lot that satisfied the retail on block A and those parking spaces elsewhere at a future phase. So those are the rundown of each of the three development proposals. Now we want to do a summary side-by-side-by-side comparison of all three proposals, so you can see how those numbers stack up against each other. So with looking at a program comparison, all development teams have over 200 multifamily units proposed, with Casto 260, JRL 252, and Singh 206. JRL and Singh both proposed townhomes associated with phase one, JRL had 59 and Singh had 22. JRL proposed 28,000 square feet of office space, the other two developers had no office space associated with phase one. Retail, Casto proposed 30,000 square feet, JRL over 46,000 square feet, and Singh 7,400 square feet. Parking spaces, Casto had 856 parking spaces, JRL 600, Singh 482. The roads associated with phase one, 1,700 for Casto, 2118 for JRL, and 700 for Singh, linear feet of roads, and then open space acreage, 1.4 for Casto, 1.75 for JRL, and .3 for Singh. There's a lot of numbers on this slide, and I apologize for that, but we thought it was important to show you a side-by-side-by-side comparison of this. When looking at a phase one financial impact comparison, again, applying the standard estimates of costs across each of the proposals, Casto, Jay, and JRL both have a $10 million deck, 400 spaces, Singh at 374 is 9.35 million. The public investment in the town green, when we apply to 1.5 million per acre, Casto's was 2.1, JRL 2.6, and Singh does not propose a town green associated with the first phase, so zero. Public investments in roads, 2.6 million to support the development for Casto, 3.2 million for JRL to support the development, and 1.1 million to support the first phase for Singh. Public investment in retail space, 8.05 million for Casto, JRL and Singh didn't propose the town supporting the retail in phase one. The estimated total public investment, that's just summing up those totals, 22.75 million for Casto, 15.8 million for JRL, and 10.4 million for Singh. The proposed land purchase price, 3.25 million for Casto, that's 690,000 per acre, approximately $2 million for JRL, 330,000 per acre, and then 5.25 million, 890,000 per acre for Singh. And the net total potential public investment, that's the total public investment minus the proposed land purchase price, 19.5 million for Casto, 13.8 for JRL, 5.2 million for Singh. The estimated incremental real estate to the tax, to the tax of the town, 3.6 million for Casto, 6.3 million for JRL, 3.8 million for Singh. And I do want to also note that on this slide, there is a note of Casto with the, with the town owning the retail and generating income off of that would generate approximately 375, $375,000 annually to the town for the stabilized retail space within the town center. We're looking at a, the numbers in a, in a, in a new way here. The total private investment, and then being able to see the, the concept plans associated with them, Casto on the left side here, 50.5 million of private investment, net total potential public investment of 19.5 million. The ratio of private to public investment associated with Casto's plan for phase one is 2.6 dollars to every dollar of public investment associated with phase one. JRL's concept with the highest amount of total private investment associated with it at 87.4 million, with the net total potential public investment 13.8 million, and that includes the town green and the roads and parking deck. That is a 6.3, a 6.3 dollars for every dollar of public investment in the, in the town center. And Singh at 52.9 million, with a net total potential public investment of 5.15 million, that's 10.3 dollars for every dollar of public investment in the first phase. So the evaluation criteria that DFI and the town staff associated and incorporated in evaluating the responses were the guiding public interest, the qualifications of the firm, past projects of the firm, experience with public-private partnerships, references, the timeline associated with their ability to execute on the project, and the feasibility, both the site and financial feasibility, that we evaluate when assessing these projects, these proposals. So, next steps. We've heard, I believe, the town manager and assistant town manager that interviews, are, we can interview the development firms that have held time on the first meeting in June for interviews of the three development teams, with ultimately the town council selecting a preferred development partner to begin exclusive negotiations with, to initiate those MOU negotiations. So those are really the next steps in line that we could follow to, to do our due diligence for these development teams and their proposals. So, at this point, I want to, I know there's a lot of information, I wanted to get through it, I know you've had some time to look at it before this meeting, but we wanted to leave enough time to, to have some thoughtful question and discussion regarding these concepts.
So Mayor, if I could real briefly before you, if you don't mind, again. Not sure where we're getting that go.
Not sure where we're getting that go.
I think it might be Eric, if you could.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so maybe Eric, thank you. So, again, as Eric has indicated, you know, we are proposing that you would hear directly from the three development partners, potentially on June 10th, that's a scheduled work session, so that you could, if you needed to, have some time that night for budget discussion, but ideally, we could focus on bringing each of the three developers in. Again, what we would like to do is give them a designated period of time or amount of time and some structure to any presentation they might give, with the emphasis really to be more on interaction with you and Q and A, as opposed to, you know, we're not, we've seen their presentations, so we're not interested in bringing you another flashy presentation, we'd rather let you have some meaningful conversation with them. So for tonight, a lot of information there, again, wanted to get this to you early so you could begin to absorb it, recognize that I'm sure this presentation raises questions for you, so we're happy to get into those tonight, and then, once we've had some time with that, we'll circle back and see where you are and have another discussion about if June 10th is practical or where we need to go, if that's okay.
Okay, that sounds like a reasonable plan.
Ready for questions at your direction, sir.
Okay, I can help facilitate here. I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, I saw her first, and then Councilmember Garamella, followed by myself.
I think Councilmember Garamella was actually ahead of me.
Okay, sure, that works for me. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, thanks. So Eric, my question is, this particular slide really does talk about everything. We asked, what was the ask, this is the demonstration project, right, like how many acres did we ask them to develop on?
The, the first phase, the block A and block B, as identified within the solicitation package, was approximately six acres of land that was associated with, with the development.
So, when I see Casto and JRL, they are putting those yellow buckets, you know, like for the area that we don't even have site control on, right?
Yeah, portions of each, portions of each of these proposals is on privately-owned property.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Casto's and JRL's.
Yes, exactly. So, is that what we asked them, or we basically, if you go back and look at the first one, the, we told them to develop in that particular stretch of stuff, right? So, so for me, I'm having a hard time quantifying how many acres is Casto asking in phase one and JRL and Singh. Singh is, I know it is the closest 6.1 or whatever is that we're looking, but I'm having a hard time understanding, because there's no way specified acreage, other than saying they are going to pay us, how much are they, how many acres are they asking?
Yeah, sorry, I, I can, I can try to pull up the comparison of private development parcel acreage, publicly-owned parking deck acreage, linear, it's gonna be hard to factor that in with the linear feet of roads associated with each of the phases also, and also the town green, which, we have the breakdown of town green acreage in each of the proposals. I can work on getting you all that breakdown.
Yeah, the reason I ask that, because if you look at Casto or JRL, they expanded the scope and then added a town green, did we ask that compared to the Singh, is exactly they followed what we told them to do? That is where I'm having a hard time understanding, they fixed, you know, like, stuck, and then JRL completely changing the dynamics of the Carolina Street, did we even ask them that kind of, because it's adding huge development costs on the town point of view.
Well, they're, they're not considering altering any roads that are, new roads that have been established in terms of the JRL concept, they're incorporating new linear feet of roads that, they're just putting together a different alignment than what has been proposed for, for new roads associated with the development. So in terms of additional costs, they're proposing more additional roads at the first phase, but that's, I wouldn't necessarily say it's, you know, a, they're still incorporating Foxglove Drive in its current alignment, but they just have a different road network associated with their first phase. And, and the point of, of that solicitation provided flexibility for developers to provide site concepts, designs, layouts, that were alternatives to, and I wanted to state that that language was incorporated into the solicitation document, and all three of these development teams were well aware that there was flexibility built in to the solicitation to provide a content plan to, that is different than what was proposed within the solicitation.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think we should allow them to have their own flexibility, but I was, under the assumption, it is within the land that we own and not, you know, the other land that we don't own and have, show stuff, and so that kind of puts us in a fix that if we had to go with these ones, we had to get the site control and other things before even we move forward. So that was like when I saw these first two, that kind of hit my thing. But if you can provide that information, it will be very helpful for me, because the acreage is, is critical of how many each one is using, that would be helpful, and what was asked, you know, to work on. Thank you.
And that incorporates the total area associated with phase one, including the road network is what you're looking for also?
Yeah, because, like, for me, this is not apples to apples anymore, because the cost-wise, it looks good, I'm fine, like, you have done excellent job, where I am having a hard time is Casto going on the other side of the street and JRL going on the other side of the street that we don't have, so if they're giving their future development plan as part of the phase one, which I don't know if we were ready for that, that's, that's where, because we don't have site control on these. That's all. Thanks, but excellent presentation and excellent compilation.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, so Eric, I would really like to say that you did an excellent job of boiling all that information down, and I feel like I understand it, so mad respect to you. I think the most important thing is that we keep in mind what we want out of the town center and the live-work-play concept, and I feel really strongly that whoever we choose, we have to have office space as part of this, otherwise, the work part of live-work-play is absent from the design. And I, I mean, of course, we, you know, we don't know this information yet, but I have a hard time believing that people are going to work retail jobs and afford these townhomes or apartments. So I think that, you know, I So, I think that, you know, I really like that the JRL proposal did include, I mean, it included apartments and townhomes, we always knew there was gonna be some high-density residential in the town center. But, you know, with the 36,000 feet of office space, I feel like there's an even chance that these people will not need to, or some of these people at least, will not need to leave this, to leave the town center, to get out on the roads, to go to work. If we don't have that, I, I think that we lose an important component of the, of the, what we envision. And I don't mind this linear town green, as a matter of fact, the more I look at it, the more I like it. The site control's a problem, I mean, I do agree with Councilmember Garamella, I mean, you know, if we don't have site control, we can't build this on top of people, so we're gonna have to figure that out, but I do think that we have to, that we have to hold fast to the vision of live-work-play. And I love that in two of the plans, we can get the town green in Phase One, I, that makes me really, really happy.
Okay. I think I'll go next, and then Councilmember Skrogan Johnson. So, I think site control is a real issue here. We had a problem last cycle through about people not being responsive to our RFP, and we did say that there's some flexibility, but I look at SING, and they are, for the most part, giving us what we asked for, other than the retail not coming till a year after. And to Councilmember Robati's point, if that can be a two-story building with some office above it, that can maybe meet our needs. So I have a question about that flex space for SING, how much retail would that be? Because right now, the chart says that 7,400, which is not really enough to activate even a Phase One, so if we could have the numbers of what that retail would be, because when you, we look long-term, we're looking at the build-out after all the phases, so it doesn't have to happen right away, that's why I'm not so worried about not having a town green right away. That was a stumbling block last time, we kept on moving the goalposts, so I'm glad that some of them are providing it early, even though we didn't ask for it, but site controls are a real issue for me. If we can go to the chart on page 31 of this?
Yeah, and Mayor, I do just want to note that in SING's proposal, that flex building in Block B is right under 30,000 square feet of space, just so, it's part of their proposal, so I just wanted to make note of that one, when you asked that of how much space that would be in, in that second block, is 29,600 square feet.
Thank you. Is that just a one-story building? Or is that two?
It doesn't, it doesn't specify, it says in Block B flex building, the other pieces say, they specify the number of stories, so I'm going to assume it's a one-story building associated with that at this point.
Okay, so that would be something to ask them. I'm hoping that you guys have a chance to go back to them before June 10th, and get a feel for some of these things, ideally, but if that could be a two-story building with office up top, that is more the vision that we were handed early, about creating a corridor along Carolina Street, so I think that would be a nice thing. But this chart on page 31, I'm trying to make it more apples to apples, so if, in the meantime, you guys can provide us this in an Excel spreadsheet or something, because my thought process is the town green, I would take out that line completely, because it's gonna happen sometime, and we're gonna have to pay for it sometime, so that's not really a decision point for me. To a certain extent, the roads as well, because we're gonna be pointing up for all the roads. I'd really like Castor to be able to address the fact that we are not in the retail business. If they can make that 8.05 million go away, that is their business, that could bring this chart to a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison for me. So, I think we're gonna go on this maybe two rounds, so that's all that I have for right now. Any follow-up questions for what I'm asking for?
No, I understand the ask of essentially removing town green and roads, because those are, and we grappled with that as part of our analysis process, understanding that that is a piece that all town, those are all gonna be publicly funded components at some point, so how do we do that best to do an apples-to-apples? And we thought through that, but we also want to show what that potential impact for Phase One is to the town also. So, we can, we can pull those numbers out to then show you what that impact is across all three proposals.
Yeah, don't, don't replace this chart, maybe have an additional chart.
Yeah, understood.
Because they both add a lot of good value. So, Councilmember Skrogan Johnson, please.
Thank you. I actually like the metric for the public investment in the town green, because the town green is not uniform, it is variable across each of the proposals, so it's, it's a helpful insight for me. The roads are kind of confusing in the sense that, does that mean that they're adding roads to the existing infrastructure versus maintaining the status quo? That's, that's an insight for me as well. When I look at all three of these proposals, I really do like incorporating the town green in Phase One. We desperately need a gathering place in Morrisville. We do have the use today of Town Hall Drive and the Indian Creek Trailhead, but we really don't have a proper space that we can have concerts, or events, or so forth, that is dedicated to that. The farmer's market, we could probably program that space a little bit better, but when you're looking at adding this intensity of new homes, multi-family homes, they are going to need to have a place to gather and to reflect, and I don't think our existing park areas is sufficient, and we need to add more almost immediately, and I like the idea of the town green. I really, of the town green design, I like JRL, because it's, it's not only just a, a place to have a town green, but they actually had a vision of how it looks, how it transforms the space, how it, it evokes a mood, or a sense of place. And that, to me, is something that's not necessarily a direct dollar value, but it's really one of those indirect values that we look for when we're trying to transform Morrisville into a unique community. The other areas that I would like to see a little bit more incorporated is workforce housing. We had in the Castor proposal, a 10% workforce housing at 80% AMI, and I think the other two applicants could consider some sort of multi-family incorporation of something like that, because we want to be inclusive, we want to have people that could possibly work and live in this space, and we need to be thinking about the fact that maybe some of our town employees would like to live and work in this area, or maybe they wouldn't because they need a little break, I don't know, but it, it would be nice to have that option. I do like the fact that the ROI, the return on investment, and the lower public investment of SING, but yet I think because they have less of the town green, that kind of impacts some of those numbers. I would like to see JRL increase the amount of proposed land purchase price, it just seems very low compared to the other applicants, I'm not sure why. Maybe there's an offset for the investment that they're doing, but it just seems like there's some inconsistency there that needs to be explained a little bit further. But overall, I would like a town green that is an acre or more, and some office space would be nice, because the town has talked about the need for more places to work, so even the town could lease some office space for its needs as it flexes through some of the needs for work balance, instead of having them shuttle down the road quite a bit, or lease space outside the immediate area. So those are my initial thoughts, but I would look forward to hearing other insights from the rest of the council.
Okay, I saw Councilmember Row next, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I like the mayor's point about the, the public investment in retail space from Castor at 8.05 million, I, I'm a little concerned about that, I'd like to see that go away, when, like he said, we're not in that business. I also am concerned about what Councilmember Garamella said about, you know, SING not going beyond the scope, and so, why is the cost so much lower? So I'd like us to look into that. Some of what I'm seeing has already been said, I like the idea of office, with this whole notion of live-work-play, and I think, the thing I like about JRL is that in addition to the green, is the food hall and the co-working space. It seems like it's defined more than either the Castor or the SING proposal, and I think that that would encourage more of our startup community, sort of like an innovation district that we could have within the downtown, which I think would feed well into some of the economic development things going on in Morrisville. The concern I have is, I don't know, it just seems, Eric, that for the amount of public investment for these proposals, to me, the incremental real estate tax seems to be low, is that standard, that you, you put in 19.5 million, you're getting 3.6 million? Is that a conservative number, or could that number be greater over time? Of course, you know, with the SING proposal, not as much upfront, and we're getting 3.8 back, so I just wanted, wanted to sort of get your input, you know, from what our expectations could be, or is that pretty standard?
Well, the, the formula that we used for that analysis was your tax rate, 36 cents per hundred dollar valuation on the total private investment, so in terms of the incremental real estate tax you generated off these projects, is a pretty standard formula that we used for this purpose. Obviously, that's dependent on how Wake County is going to, you know, assess, perform their assessments for these properties. So, in terms of pulling more for, to the town for the incremental real estate tax, I don't, I can't advise you on how, how to work that out, but for the purposes here, you know, and this is again, looking at a 20-year period for the project as well.
Okay, yeah, because I guess, you know, I've just, it's been a while since we've looked at this stuff, I just always assumed that, you know, over time, you would have much more long-term sustaining revenue coming in after all these private investments, but, um, so anyway, I like the idea of live-work-and-play, I like the, I like, I'd like to, you know, take these proposals back, review them, and then, when we interview them, ask them, you know, specific questions about, you know, their specific, you know, whether the, the public investment in retail would be necessary. You know, I think for me, the office space is gonna be important, along with the retail and the residential, so you have all three components, and I'll probably have questions on the second round, but that's all I have for now.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
So can I, I just want to follow up with Councilmember Row. Eric, when, when you calculated this estimated incremental real estate tax to the town, you're not making any assumptions on growth, or, or any kind of?
I, I-
Go ahead.
For this purpose, I didn't apply a, a growth rate associated with, you know, if Wake County's going to reassess every four, five years, six years, seven years, what, what that means to this, so for the purposes of this, and maybe I should explain it, it's essentially staying at that total private investment for, and the, and the current tax rate for the town of Morrisville, so I didn't apply any escalator to that for the 20-year period. So, that's probably not realistic, how that would be in, in all reality, but, you know, so across all three proposals, it's gonna be, you know, an increase, not necessarily, you know, only one group feeling it versus the others. And over a 20-year period, this is just Phase One, where you should expect multiple phases from each, each of the proposals calls for multiple phases of development, ultimately seeing more real estate tax generated for this area.
So for, you know, thank you for that explanation, but for public consumption, I think that needs to be spelled out here. I think this is, it's, it's very deceiving then, because we do know that property values are reevaluated every four years, we do know that historically, property values have increased significantly, significantly here in the town of Morrisville, so that incremental real estate tax to the town is gonna be higher, so I, I don't, and you're right, and, and it's hard to project that, although we, we tend to do that, because we, we do projections in all our budgeting, and, but anyhow, I think that needs to be spelled out, because this is, this would give me heartburn, as a resident, to say, we're gonna invest X amount of dollars and only see what kind of return on investment? And so this is not, you're right, this is not realistic, so I would, I would, I would venture to say we need to put some wording around this, and, and we all know that Apple is coming here, and so in the last 24 hours, everybody's property values just went up, so, and we know we'll see that increase over the next 20 years as well, so, okay, so I, I actually do have some other questions, or comments, and comparing these three projects is really very difficult, because these are not apple-to-apple comparisons at all, so I, I appreciate the help in, in trying to help us compare these as best we can. What's most important to me as we move forward is that, first of all, we pick a partner who has an extensive history of mixed-use experience, and has extensive experience in P3, and so those, those two criteria are important to me, as well as a return on investment. So, I know this is only the beginning of the phases to come in the town center, so I know we won't get everything this first go-around, but the, the more we can get, the better. And so, so those are like my overall comments, and as far as comments for the three different projects, if you can get us some more information, and I think we've all kind of talked about that before, June would be helpful. For me, for Castor, I want to know how flexible they are on the acquiring, the remaining lots, you know, that the town has to acquire them, and they, they're not gonna, I assume, it sounded to me that they wouldn't move forward unless we had all the additional parcels purchased, so I, I would just want to kind of clarify that and make sure, and see how flexible they are in that, and as well as the town owning the commercial space, because that, that, that's kind of a deal breaker for me personally. That, that kind of says to me that they're not willing to take the risk, and so that kind of raises red flags for me, and how much they are invested in this project. For JRL, Eric, I thought, and maybe I'm getting all of these confused, but the, the site control for the additional five parcels that are needed for their proposal, were they going to purchase those, or have some involvement in those five parcels? I thought they were, maybe I'm confused.
I think they would defer to the town, of what the town would prefer for the acquisition of the remaining parcels, I think, so, I don't think it's spelled out within the proposal, so I could pull in.
Well, and if, and if that's the case, I'd like to understand if they are flexible of working with us somehow on that, not sure how that would look or feel, but.
Yeah, and, and I, we can ask and clarify around that in terms of flexibility and willingness to work with the town on acquisition of those remaining five parcels for their first phase.
Okay, and then also for their, their proposal, the, the linear feet that they have, the, I don't have it in front of me now, oh yes I do, the 20, 2100 linear feet, is that all- in front of me now, oh, yes, I do, the 20, 2100 linear feet, is that all in their proposed construction project, not outside of their, kind of their yellow-lined proposal?
Let me go to that yellow-lined area. Sorry, and the yellow line shouldn't go on the other side of the road here. Where my hand is, that road there is this one here, which is, you know, there's no name to that road, but that goes on the south side. And they coin terms for how, what kind of roads they're envisioning as the system or the network of the roads. So it would be that one that's on the south side of this yellow line here, and then goes northwest up, and then connects over to Church Street. And then there is that, sorry, and then there is this, goes north, and then there is this road here that goes on the north side of the town green, if you can see my cursor, that then goes over to Church Street.
Okay, thank you for that, because I was trying to figure out where all that road linear feet was. So, okay, thank you. And then I guess I, that's all I have for them. Then the, my questions about the SING development are around the fact that these are all rental units and not for-sale units. I'd like to know how flexible they are on that, because that might be a deal breaker for me, by the way. And then I too have a question about the difference in the sale price of the land between these three, the price of the property that we will sell to them, and they're three very different. And I too would like to know if that, the difference in the prices per acre are somehow incorporated in the rest of the plan, and somehow factors into their financial plan. I too am a little concerned, or I have questions about why it's so significantly different prices per acre. And then the last question I have is more for you all. If these, of course, not in SING, SING actually, actually, their proposal is exactly the property we asked for. The other two require site control, and so I'd like to know from staff, from you, how easy do you think it will be to get the site control for these additional properties? That would, that's an important question to me. And again, I know you can't give a definitive answer on that, but if you have any feel for if site control will be easy, hard, whatever, that would be nice to know. And then just the last thing I will say, I, Councilmember Robati said it earlier, this linear green space kind of grew on me, too. I kind of liked that as well. And I liked in their proposal, they talked about, I think, if I'm remembering correctly, they talked about a string of pearls and how this all connects, and they are absolutely correct. And I really love that idea. But anyhow, that's, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, so there was a lot of information on that first round through. I'd like to recognize Assistant Manager Zudima for his thoughts before we sort of...
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll let Eric jump in at any point if he feels I'm going astray, but let me offer some general feedback based on your comments and try to answer a couple of things. You know, one, I would tell you, there's a lot of information here. I do encourage you to go back, particularly with the supplemental questions that were included. Some of what you have asked about is at least addressed there. Maybe not to your satisfaction, but I think we had some of the same questions that you have had about things like site control, and do we have to get all these 16 properties for one developer? Do we have to own things? So we had very much, I think, some of the same. So some of that will be addressed in the supplemental questions. And then some of that, quite honestly, just may not come out until you get further into negotiations. So on that point, you know, I think you know this, but I would remind you that, you know, the purpose here, particularly when you start to talk about the real estate estimates and things like that, you know, this is not to give you an idea of exactly what this will cost and exactly what the ROI is. You know, our goal here, just as a reminder, and I think in transparency to the community, is to try to let you understand the similarities and the differences between the three proposals. You know, you mentioned the qualifications. We've heard P3 several times. I think Eric would agree with me that we would tell you that all three are qualified, in our opinion, to do what they've proposed to do. Again, the three developments are somewhat different, as you can see, you know, from the map you're looking at, different approaches to doing this, but we have not heard anything through reference checks or seen anything in their work that would indicate to us that they're not capable and qualified to do the work they've proposed to do. You know, in terms of the land price, again, I do think that it's important to recognize that that is absolutely a part of a bigger conversation. So the screen that Eric has up now, I think, speaks a little bit more to that. You know, again, there's a lot of moving parts here, and so we also walk a somewhat fine line between discussion and gathering information versus negotiation. And so you, most of you have been through this one time, you know, going through it again a second time. There will be some of this that we can absolutely have for you before you are asked to make a decision about who you might work with. And then some of that's going to come out in that longer negotiation after we establish an MOU and begin to work towards that development agreement later in the year. So I think we can certainly try to bring you back some additional information. Some of that information may be in that packet with another read, now that we've had some of this conversation, and we all have a chance to go back and look at that, but we will certainly try to gather information. And then, you know, again, the green space, I just want to mention that that was one of the last things we heard from you as a group, was that that was really important if we could get it. So, you know, Councilmember Garamella, I certainly appreciate your comments about some of these folks going a little bit away from what we proposed. You know, two things I would mention with that, one of which, and I think Eric was tried to be clear on this upfront, was we have proposed a concept, but it is by no means the only concept. And, you know, DFI is doing their best work, and really good work, to give you ideas of what might work and what might not. And so you've seen in these three proposals, three sort of different looks at what they think will work in the context of phase one, perhaps versus a future phase, and things like that. So I do think there is some, you know, some additional work to go there, but we believe we've got, you know, three qualified developers, and we want to get as much information to you as we can, so that you can get comfortable with which of these three will most be likely to match your vision in the long run, and at the same time, get you that ROI that we're certainly looking for with investing public dollars. I hope that's helpful.
We all found that very helpful. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Garamella has a comment.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Garamella?
Thanks, Brandon. I think, you know, I agree with you. I wanted to ensure that the developers are not married to this particular plan. If we pick any one of them, we have the room for negotiation with them, at least, you know, so that... But certain things I wanted to ask Brandon is, we are not putting any money towards the bond for any of the downtown. So with that said, my approach, and you know how, how much I am inclined for parking deck, right? You know, and that's always a long conversation everyone has, but nevertheless, I'm trying to also look at what is the minimal liability for the town that, you know, we have. Because when I look at this numbers of 19.5 and 13.8, it just blows me out, because that's pretty much can be a combat, especially with the timeframes and the site controls. So that is one thing. And also, one thing I know, the maintenance of the parking deck is a big issue. Durham had issues, you know, Rich Coppola said once, like, you know, once the parking deck has issues, then to fix it is a lot of money. And I like the SING proposal, where they said they'll take care of everything, and we don't have to worry about the maintenance of the parking deck. And so I also want to start capturing those things, because the hidden costs and the hidden something which are good, like the solar panels are good, that is getting incorporated. I would like to really see, with what Ricky said, if somehow we can get some green space figured out in the SING's proposal. I like the JRL, the way it is, but for me, it's like you give a guardrail to all three people to do something, and then we get something out of the box, which is great, but we don't have site control on those two. And that's what worries me, that it will slow down the whole process. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to do round two. I'll share some thoughts, followed by Councilmember Robati, and then we'll also be able to give emails to Brandon and Eric over time. I had a couple of thoughts about the incremental tax revenue. I don't think anyone's really used to looking at it over 20 years, so if we could just make that the first year after completion, that would make it apples to apples that people understand a tax revenue per year, because that's essentially how we do it when we talk to developers, anyway. I'm also very in favor of doing whatever we can to create equity for the people living in our town. So if there's any opportunity for condos or for the townhomes to be for sale, that would be a positive, in my opinion. Also, I just believe that the land prices that they're willing to pay for the acres is essentially a plug in order to meet their hurdle ROI. So I think that that's going to be the answer over time. So they're gonna, they need to get some money from somewhere, so I think that's what the answer to that is, but they can address that directly. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, so attempting to keep round two short, I have two quick questions. Realizing that all this is totally conceptual, but have all the developers been informed since I see that at least JRL went all the way to Church Street? The developers that are bidding on these projects, are they familiar with the historical district and the issues they're in, like we don't want roads going straight out into people's backyards and that kind of stuff?
So I think, generally speaking, they've all seen the RFP, which speaks to that generally.
Okay.
You know, we've not had that level of specific conversation, but yes, they've all seen certainly the land use plan and what that looks like, and the town center subarea in there, and then the information we shared with them in the RFP as well.
Okay, great. And the other thing is, I just wanted to mention that, on the JRL concept plan, I just love that, like, there, I feel like they are really seeing the vision when they have things like community garden and boutique retail and potential civic campus and stuff like that. Like, that makes me, that gives me a level of confidence that they're seeing the same vision for this thing that I am. Like, I mean, I understand that the site control is a big problem, like, I get that, but I, I just, it's really important to me that we get somebody, that we partner with somebody that really gets it. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for other people who want to share final thoughts before we give this to Brandon to wrap up. Okay, seeing none, back to you, Assistant Manager, and to Eric.
Eric, any, any final thoughts or any particular questions for council?
No, I think the last thing, I know that the site control and the going beyond the boundaries of the six acres, something I do want to note is that I had extensive conversations with each of these development groups during the solicitation open period. They were all informed that there was flexibility. They all became aware of the Eric Lidle properties that the town was working towards, and that there was communication to think creatively and flexibility built in. So I don't want it to be a, you know, I think, yes, site control is something that we need to be considered of, but I don't want it to be a, oh, they went beyond, because there was a lot of communication to them during this open period of, let's think, you know, propose a concept that you believe in, you all are creative as developers, show something you think would be a way to move the town of Morrisville and establish a really dynamic town center core. So just wanted to, just wanted to make you all aware that there was conversations with each of these development firms during this process detailing that information. So they didn't just go out there and work on that without sort of, you know, let's propose this and hope that it sticks. There was a lot of thoughtful consideration about that. And also noting, I've heard a lot of what you all are hoping to have before potential interviews. I'm going to work towards that, and I think there's a lot of information that I can evaluate and incorporate, so that hopefully we can have thoughtful interviews with these development firms, where you can, we can have key informative conversations with them to help you all.
Like a supplement on top of the supplementary questions would be helpful.
So Councilmember Garamella has asked, go ahead, Eric.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just saw that question. We will, I think we could set up a set of clarifying questions to the developers. I've communicated with all of them that out of this meeting tonight, we may have a set of questions that they can address before that June 10th meeting. There's plenty of time between now and then to have a set of questions go out that Brandon can, Brandon and I can synthesize, you know, the, what we heard as the questions tonight, and get those off the development teams for you all to have prior to the interview process. So, yes.
So I think, Mayor, if I may, what we would ask is that if you have a chance to go back and look at this, which I'm sure you will, there's a lot here, but we would ask that no later than, you know, Monday morning of next week, that you follow up with us by email, and you can send that to me. I could certainly share that with Eric. If you have any specific questions, or if you have other comments that you would like to offer, again, I think we can dig back through the materials we have and answer some of that, but we are absolutely happy to send them back, sort of supplemental number two, and get some of that information, and then use that to get you to a level of comfort where we would still aim for a June 10th session, bringing them each in, giving them, you know, a limited period of time if they want to give some sort of information to you, but primarily just let them talk with you and answer questions with you, understanding that ultimately, you're not going to have all the answers you may want before you select one of the three to enter into an MOU with, and then we go down the path of a development agreement and get you all those answers. So want the public to appreciate that. You certainly appreciate that, that we want you to have as much information as you can. But again, at some point, it is going to be about what, what fits best, what feels best, what seems to be most responsible on behalf of the community going forward.
That sounds like a good process to keep us moving forward on this very important project for all of us in the town. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Eric. We appreciate it.
All right. Have a great night. Thank you all.
Thank you. So we have one closed session this evening to discuss a matter of attorney-client privilege. Before I ask for a motion, I want to share with those watching from home that there are no plans to conduct additional public business at tonight's meeting. So thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Our next meeting is a work session, budget workshop, scheduled for Tuesday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. Have a nice week. Please continue to practice the three Ws, so we can all continue to live connected, live well. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor and council, pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318.11a3, I move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing an attorney-client privileged matter.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Rowe. I have a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith will take us, roll call vote to take us into closed session, please.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson? Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion entered closed session, passes unanimously.
Thank you. It is 10:02. We are now in closed... At this point, we will discuss... At this point, we will discuss items pulled from the consent agenda, so item 5A, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Um, yes, I was actually just attempting to get to the, um, the agenda packet on my laptop, and it says that it's been removed, but I can tell you what my question was. A couple of different places in the, um, in the personnel policies, there are references to tattoos that could be unacceptable or hairstyles, and I just wanted to make sure that in those hairstyles that are, um, that we are considering distracting or whatever the problem with those is, um, I just wanted to make sure that we are not including traditionally African-American hairstyles such as braiding, um, beads, or any other type of hair ornamentation that could be considered, um, could be considered cultural.
And if, if I may, if I could introduce to council Nate Meyer, who has worked for the town for a long time, he is our senior HR analyst, uh, but many of you may not have officially met him or seen him in a while. Uh, he was, uh, primarily responsible for keeping Lori and Law, and I in line as we updated our policy. So Nate, if you could answer Councilmember Robati's question?
Yes, so, uh, with, in reference to hairstyles and, one thing we did try to do in the policy was to remove the language on unconventional and excessive hairstyle, just to sort of broaden that so that if there is not, so no one can come up with, you know, an idea of like, I just don't like that hair, I don't want that, whatever, with the intent of really only focusing on whether, uh, for safety or performance issues. So, you know, if somebody, you know, something poses a safety issue, we could, we could address, address it in that sense, but not necessarily, um, specific hairstyles.
Okay, um, I can't see the policy, so let me just ask you, is it called out in the policy that hairstyles could, can be acceptable for unacceptable for safety reasons and not for personal preference of a supervisor or something like that?
Yes, so the language that we have, we, we remove the excessive or unconventional hairstyles must be covered during work hours.
Great.
And what we are focusing on is that hair just simply must be secured so that it does not interfere with job performance or pose a safety threat.
Okay.
So if, if it was deemed to pose some threat, then there would certainly be a conversation around that. As far as, I think you were referencing tattoo, body piercing, and hairstyles sort of in reference to that, um, we did add a, a, a line in there specifically in consultation with human resources so that a supervisor couldn't just simply say, hey, you gotta cut your hair.
Okay.
They would need to consult with HR, HR directly.
And is there, is there an appeal process for a decision like that?
Um, for an appeal?
I guess I just don't wanna see us, you know, not hiring or, you know, not hiring creative people that would be awesome at their job because they have pink hair or tattoos or something.
Sure, uh, I think really the way, where it comes down to is simply focusing on the safety and issue at hand.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You can't see it, but I'm smiling.
What?
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, uh, thanks Nate, I think in, just in that reference, I wanted to also ensure, like, you know, turbans, right? Um, the Sikh community, it's a religious thing, it has been widely accepted in all the police departments and the US Army, so if someone comes, you know, like, uh, has a turban, that should be inclusive of that, uh, statement.
Yes, so we have, um, in the existing policy with no change, we do have, uh, additional language, it's on the next page, speaks to, um, exceptions to this policy due to religious or medical needs, will be reviewed by the department head and HR as well, so we do specifically address something of that nature, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, yeah, sounds good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions or discussion about this before we make a motion? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adopt our personnel policies update.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Rao, yes?
I'll second.
And a second from Mayor Protim Johnson. Uh, Town Clerk Smith will do a roll call vote on item 5A, personnel policies update, please.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt resolution 2021-160-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, Mayor. Is it not still in there, duration of Russia are targeted locations, is that still an outcome measure?
It's crossed out.
It looks like it's not crossed out online.
Uh, it's definitely crossed out online.
Yeah. It's, so it's, it's actually part of outcome measure 1.3, tacked on there at the bottom, because again, we need to further refine that.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
My bad then, sorry about that.
Yep.
We're still looking for that one, I guess.
It is hard to read a red line, I apologize.
There's a lot going on there. Yeah, so I think aspirationally, even ones that we can't quite get to now, we don't wanna lose track of them completely. Um, I guess this is really overarching for all of them, not specifically this one. If we're not capturing data and outcomes and measures at the department level, where are we capturing them? Just 'cause things are captured at the department level doesn't mean they come off the plan. I'm not sure where else we would get any of our data anyway. You know what I mean?
Not certain I'm following your question.
Well, you said that, um, generally, we're trying to remove any measures that are being captured at the department level anyway. So I'm trying to understand who's gonna capture them, someone above the department level, I mean, they're not operational, so I'm just curious about that statement.
Sure, yeah, so if, if you scrolled over to some of our department plans, um, you would see some very similar language in metrics. Um, and just to eliminate that redundancy, if it's more operational leaning than maybe aspirational or guiding, we would opt to recommend and leave that in the department plan rather than our organizational strategic plan. Um, it will be captured in one of the two, but if it's more of an operational item, uh, then I think it just would make sense from a staff perspective to leave it there, but yes, you're also correct, everything in our organizational plan is also still captured and collected by staff, it's just which staff that gets sort of assigned to.
Okay, just as long as important measures roll up and are very easily visible to our residents, I guess that's the important thing that I'd like to make sure about.
Okay.
Okay, um, Councilmember Rao, and then any remote participants if they're interested? Okay, Councilmember Rao, and then any remote participants if they're interested?
In relation to objective 1.2, when it says collaborate and partner with other government entities in the private sector to support development of transportation infrastructure and related plans, I mean, we're already doing that with development. And I think that's critically important in terms of, you know, moving forward with partnering with developers as we build out the remaining parts of Morrisville. But I would be very curious as to just keeping our pulse on the economic development, because I was intrigued with, you know, Apple's announcement of $100 million going into transportation. You know, a couple of years ago, I asked Secretary Teta, you know, what would happen? He was the DOT Secretary under McCrory. There, if a company came in near 54 or McCrimmon or somewhere and built, you know, thousands of jobs, would there be economic development money that could come in to widen the roads and things like that? So I'm just curious as to, we have this goal, how are we going to use that goal as a staff to work with our regional partners to see what the options are from a, is that just sort of something that we can evaluate and explore moving forward?
We'll certainly take that back.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be curious to look at the commerce, I don't know how it works, how did they come up with the $100 million number? The number in the article said that, and I just would like us to learn more about how that number is calculated so that if we got a big company like Microsoft, or they already announced 500, but let's say there's a huge company coming into Morrisville and, you know, and the state negotiated transportation dollars, how would we trigger that to go to our roads, like 54 for example? You know, I mean, just as an example, but could we leverage a private partner to accelerate our road infrastructure and accelerate it with much larger dollars than what we're getting now? That's my question.
Anything else, Councilmember Rao?
No, that's it.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
So Erin, the only other thing I'll add that you haven't heard so far is I like that you're using the language including but not limited to. I think that's really helpful in case technology changes, projects change, so I appreciate that language in here, and it's throughout, so that's, I think, very helpful.
Yeah, I think that's, thank you, Mayor Pretam Johnson, I think that's really important because we don't want to limit ourselves with only defining certain specific elements in our plan. I think it's certainly a good idea for us to have some samples or some examples, because I think it's just helpful for us as an organization. But if we put those in and didn't put that sort of clarifying language, then I think it could trip us up in the future. So, yeah, we certainly tried to include that where we thought it would be helpful.
Very, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, not seeing anyone else interested in sharing at this time or having questions on this slide, so we can move on to the next.
Yep. All right, so for goal number two, thriving livable neighborhoods, similarly, again, we consolidated our objective language, and we really sort of pulled this into two areas. Enhanced housing options, and then utilizing our already existing and sort of to come town guiding documents for development and redevelopment. We've referenced sustainable development in objective 2.2, that was pretty consistent with feedback we had received overall. Initiatives were organized to align with these objectives. We reorganized some pre-existing language for this alignment. We've also added affordable and/or workforce housing in initiative 2.1. We've also added preservation of natural areas or programmed event activity space in initiative 2.2. Again, pretty consistent with some of the feedback we got from council and from the public. Our outcome measure here also needs some refinement. The measure that exists is good to know, but are there other measures that would be of greater value to Morrisville?
Okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Skargens-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Erin, I just wanted to say that this is a really great change on this topic, because adding in affordable living, workforce housing is in alignment with our policies and goals, and it just kind of works really well together and is bringing us up to the most current point in where we want to be. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to do a shout out and say that I appreciate those updates.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah, I was just, I think that maybe we should clarify the, under initiative 2.1, ensure affordable and workforce housing guidance is followed. I think we should just clarify where that guidance is coming from.
Okay.
I see it down further, follow guidance outlined in Morrisville Affordable Housing Plan, but I think that probably those two might be the same thing.
We can work on that language, we can make that clear.
I'd like to share that I'd be interested in determining how we can keep track of sidewalk connectivity and just greenways and things like that, because we're dropping off the half-mile walk to a park, so it seems like that's a measure that might be important to at least baseline and then see if we're making progress, or is that departmental or?
So, outcome measure 2.1 is almost verbatim in our Parks and Rec Plan at this time, so I foresee that or something very similar continuing. But I'll certainly take that feedback as we work on revising our department plans following adoption of our organizational plan, because agreed, I think with conversations we've had with staff, that also is a pretty telling metric, so we'll make sure that that gets captured.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Looking around for others on this slide, not seeing any, so I think we can move on.
Okay. Make myself a note. All right, goal number three. So we consolidated again our pre-existing objective language to encompass events and opportunities for engagement and collaboration into one objective. We added an objective to reflect inclusion and diversity language, and we also added an objective to reflect expanded availability of open and green space. And this has some slight redundancy to, I believe, an objective in goal number two, but also felt that it still was very fitting here, so something we can look at a little bit further. We reorganized our initiatives to align with the newly redefined objectives. We defined some opportunities for engagement and collaboration in initiative 3.1. We aim to define how we could incorporate some cultural programming and raise diversity and awareness of cultural needs in initiative 3.2. We refined outcome measure language in 3.1 and in 3.2 to be a little bit more measurable and attainable. Happy to hear your thoughts on this goal as well.
I just have a little semantics thing. Could we perhaps consider taking away biannual and just say every two years? So it's just really clear it's not every six months, or, because that's, some people see biannual as being every six months, and I don't think that's our intention there.
Isn't semi-annual every six months?
I looked it up, but it's kind of both. So if it's not really clear, I think every two years is just really clear. Looking for other more substantive ideas on this one?
That's a good clarifying point. If it has two meanings, then we find the middle ground.
Okay, Councilmember Rabadi?
It doesn't have two meanings. Okay, I mean, I don't care if we change it, but it doesn't have two meanings. Biannual only means one thing, okay. But having said that, so I see that initiative 3.2, create and offer programming inclusive of all cultures, backgrounds, and experiences. What is the procedure by which a community in town could request that the town do something to reflect their culture? Because I would love to see these things being community-driven rather than, you know, rather than us just deciding that a community is big enough or important enough to get an event. So what is the process for something like that?
So that's actually what we probably need to define, because we, remember, the initiative is the how. That's how we're going to accomplish something. We want to raise awareness, and we want to educate staff and our community on the diversity and the cultures that exist here and around us. And then we also want to promote and enhance any of that cultural programming, whether it be ours, whether it maybe be a community event that occurs here that we are not sponsoring. So I think we have to find those opportunities, and we have to define those opportunities. But that did not exist in our plan prior to this time.
Yeah, no, that's a great, yeah, that's a great change.
And I think it was, again, I think that was pretty, pretty consistent feedback throughout, so this is, this is certainly our starting point.
Okay, great, fair enough.
Anything else, Councilmember Rabadi? Councilmember Rao, please?
One of the things that I think would be nice to consider is, as we look at inclusivity and diversity, when I was serving on the task force, one of the things that came out for race and equity for the league was identifying the difference between racism and systemic bias. And I know our police department does that when they're hiring and training, trying to identify bias. And I think that that's something that would keep us in line with just what's going on in the country in terms of just, you know, law enforcement and other things that we're seeing. I'm not saying that's happening in Morrisville, but as a policy, I think it's something that we might want to consider. I don't know whether it could be language that's included, or would that be sort of a separate category? Just a thought.
Are you speaking for the community, for staff, or, just so I have understanding of sort of where?
For both, I mean, for the community in terms of, you know, educating the community on the difference between racism and racial bias, you know, and identifying the difference between equality and equity. So the example that they gave was equality is everybody's sitting on the same level of the bench and watching the game from the same height, you know, over a fence. But equity is someone might be higher up than someone else, and are they getting the fair access to resources? So equity, so there's this difference between, when you look at division, we talk about inclusivity, one thing I learned from the task force is that there's racism, which are general statements that are made, but then there could be anti-racist policies where local governments develop as part of their strategic plans or their plans, policies that actually would discourage that and encourage the community to be aware. Some people may not understand the difference between racism and racial bias, right? And so it's something, I don't know, I just want to throw that out there, it's something for us to think about, as, you know, whether it's, we come up, I mean, Councilmember Rabadi's been leading the efforts on a Juneteenth event and things like that, so I think as we do those kinds of things, as long as it's marrying with inclusivity, but having this as part of a discussion. Just sharing my thoughts.
We'll take it back, thank you.
Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So I just want to kind of echo what Steve said, too. I think that somehow to incorporate that is important, and I don't know how to do it, quite frankly. But I would agree, those are really important topics and issues and definitions, and that is like the key to the whole thing, to have a really inclusive community, so, but I don't know, beyond saying I echo those thoughts, I don't know how to include it, Erin, but, so I just want to say that. And the other thing I want, and you kind of, you already alluded to this, that the objective 3.3, to expand availability of open end or green spaces, I 100% love that. I just, I'm struggling with how it fits right here, and it shouldn't be like in the goal before.
So we have a similar component in the previous goal, and there was a component very similar to that in this goal in our original plan. So, again, this is a draft, and we're just trying to sort of figure out where things best fit, because we don't want to have those redundancies. We don't want to have, you know, the same thing stated two and three times, and then someone says, oh, well, where does this fit? You know, we want it to be very definitive, so if you think about it, you know where it fits. So we'll, we're going to work through it, and we're going to figure out where it best fits.
Good, thank you. Councilmembers Skargens-Johnson.
Councilmembers Skargens-Johnson, please.
Thank you. I really like the idea about the inclusive community, and I want, like Steve said, we need to be very careful about our definitions and really think about the wording here. It's so important, and the green spaces needs to be removed. It is really, I think, a different area. This is really focused on people and how we respect, engage, and treat people in our community. And the green spaces are very important, but I think it doesn't fit in this bucket. It fits in another bucket. Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to share about that same thing, availability of open and green spaces, and that that's a place that we gather and how we engage. So if there's some initiative measure and an outcome associated with it, I mean, that's the challenge. Each of these objectives should be measurable, and they should have an initiative. So if we can find an initiative that matches, we can perhaps keep it. If not, I kind of agree, maybe it doesn't quite fit here, but I think it's important. I'm not sure if we want to go so far as to include something about anti-racism in this, but that is the opposite of inclusive, so maybe there's a way to get there intentionally about how, in order to be inclusive, you have to be anti-non-inclusive, if you sort of get where I'm going on that one. So to sort of echo what Councilmember Rao was saying, I think that that would be a place to have that in here, and I understand staff is already working on this, so I'd be very interested to see what comes of that. Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, I don't actually have any problem with coming right on and saying that we have a goal to be actively anti-racist. I mean, it's, it is very different from being not racist, but I think, I would love to live in a place that, that got right out there with a goal of being anti-racist. I mean, I'd like to think that's all of our goals. There's a really good book on that, that I was just going to try to find, but I wrote, I read How to Be an Anti-Racist. Oh, yeah, by Ibram Kendi, that was, that was really, really honed in on this topic of it's not enough just not to be racist, you have to be actively anti-racist, like Councilmember Rao said, and I really don't have any problem putting that right in there. That's just me, I mean, I'd like to hear what other people think, but.
And that's why we heard, had discussions. Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So, you know, Erin, all these goals are incredibly important, but, you know, for me personally, this is, this is, this is it, because I talk about this all the time. I think this is what distinguishes us as a community, and I would tell you, and I say it all the time, you all have heard my line, that we're the most welcoming, diverse, and inclusive community, and I believe it. So I want to make sure we're, we're, we're really saying it where we need to say it, and this, this would be the spot. So this one, yeah, maybe we all need to think about this a little more, you gave us to the end of the month, so.
End of the week.
Oh, end of the week, I was like, well, that's like the end of the month.
That's the same thing.
Same thing. But, so I appreciate the conversation here, because I think this, again, for me, is really, really important, although they're all important, I don't want to.
Should we circle back to you, Councilmember Rabadi? I see your card's still up.
Oh.
Okay, I think we're good on this slide, thank you very much.
Yeah, all right, hitting the home stretch. Next one is public safety readiness. So we consolidated our objective language to two focus areas, educate and prepare, that's sort of the public component, and be operationally ready to meet demands, and that's sort of the staff component. We expanded and sort of further defined the public or community safety initiative language, and identified some of those known resources in initiative 4.1A. Again, not, not totally an inclusive list, but sort of what could be possible, and refined or added to pre-existing initiative language to prepare and ready staff in initiative 4.2. We refined the outcome measure language for both to be a little more meaningful and attainable, so please discuss and let me know your thoughts.
I really like Initiative 4.1A about community safety, HOA engagement, things like that. I think that's really strong. And the more we can do that, the better off we're going to be, having everyone on board, because it's not just staff that makes a town safe, it's everyone looking out for each other. Looking around for other comments? Okay? On this one? Okay.
I'll just say, I think this one's good. I don't have anything to add, really. I think this one's really well done.
And we have till the end of the month, so.
And I'll say, a lot of this was, was sort of already part of the plan, we just tweaked it a little bit. So I think this one sort of was, was pretty strong already. Not that the others weren't, but a lot of good work here.
This one was already resonating with staff and the residents already. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, just a question. So Initiative 4.2, maintaining accretive status, is that part of adopting best practices? Or is adopting best practices part of maintaining accretive status? Like, it seems like the rest of these things could come under maintaining our accreditations. Like, maybe that's the, maybe that's the initiative? I could be wrong, but I'm just saying.
So the way I understand it is accreditation involves a whole bunch of different things for police and for fire. And our fire department is more recently accredited, our police department is kind of a level or two in to accreditation. And some of the things that they're both doing are helping them to best serve the community. So that's sort of why we have the initiative at that service level, if that makes sense. And then all of these other components sort of feed into what are the things that we can best do to serve? And if you're accredited, that demonstrates that you've done this whole litany of things to get to that level already. And then these are some other things that might also be part of, of sort of providing that service.
That makes sense, thank you.
And I think some of our departments might be looking to exceed the accredited service level goals, so that's why they would both be in there perhaps. Councilmember Garamella?
I was saying, along with public safety, I think our parks and public works are also accredited. I think recently, the public works, we got one of the two, if I remember, towns in North Carolina, which has the highest rating. So I think that is critical for the standards that we maintain for our residents.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we're good on that slide. Thank you.
All right. So we took a long look at both this and our next goal, because these are those two that really didn't resonate quite as high with our surveyed groups. This is one of our two largest goals, it has the most components. So we really refined our objective language to clarify our intentions here. We found sort of three focus areas that stood out. Public programs and services, staffing, and technology. We refined our initiative language, again, used a good bit of our pre-existing language and then added to it, and organized those into corresponding objective category components. Within Initiative 5.2, we included diversity and inclusion programming and promotion of pay equity. Both of these elements have sort of already gotten off the ground here in Morrisville, but they're critically, critically important to the objective of enhancing our staffing efforts and promoting employee engagement, and we really wanted to be sure that we captured those. We further refined the outcome measure language, again, to be a little more meaningful, give it a little more teeth, and measurable and attainable.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I would frankly expect this one to score a little bit lower with, you know, with the general public, just because I think that operational excellence of town staff and programming is one of those things that you don't realize you're really passionate about until the whole thing is going wrong, and then you're, you know, then you see the value of it. So I, I'm not that concerned that this one scores lower, but I do think you've done a really good job here of honing in on better metrics, clearer objectives, tighter initiatives. So I think that that, I mean, I think if you were going to raise that score at all, this would probably do it.
I agree, there's a lot of meat on this bone. So that's, looks really good.
Mayor Tim Johnson?
Yeah, you did a fantastic job on this one, Aaron, but I, I do, I love the whole, the employee diversity inclusion programming, and you've included that in here, too. So that's all very important. No, I think you did a good job on this one.
Like you said, home stretch.
All right. Last goal. So, again, took a long, hard look at this one, also didn't rank super high or resonate super high with our surveyed groups. Also has a lot of components to it. Streamlined our objectives into three focus areas, attracting new businesses, retaining current businesses, and educational needs. We reorganized our initiatives to align with the objective focus areas and then refined that language. Initiative 6.2, we included promotion of and working with small businesses and identifying related resources. I think that was some feedback that we had heard pretty consistently. And Initiative 6.3, we refined to remove some of that specificity, but still provide clarity of our partner resources. Our outcome measures here still need some further refinement. Many of the measures previously defined reflected information that we don't obtain nor maintain, and we want to, again, ensure that we are collecting and tracking the most meaningful data for Morrisville. All of the information in the outcome measures is good to know, but we really want to know what helps us the most as an organization. So happy to hear your thoughts.
Mayor Tim Johnson?
I just have a questionnaire about, under Initiative 6.1, where you talk about develop a toolkit to outline the process for starting and running a business. Do you mean how, is it a toolkit for how to, what they need from the local government to help them start and run it? Because starting in, the process of starting and running a business, that, I'm not sure we have the, do we have the expertise to do that? Or am I reading this wrong?
So it was previously stated a little bit different in our original plan, and part of the issue there is, we get pretty regular calls of someone saying, hey, I'm thinking about starting this new business, what do I need to do with you guys? Well, you actually don't start with us. Here's where you start. So it's maybe just a little bit of that, sort of an educational toolkit. And again, toolkit may not be the best word, but the language previously wasn't maybe quite the best defined either. So we just want to help people sort of understand what that process is. We're happy to guide them in the right direction, but it actually doesn't start here if it's a brand-new business.
Okay, so you give them, you head them toward the resources that they need?
Yes, more of a, more of a resource guide, perhaps.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Yeah, because, yeah, how to start a business, that's a whole different.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good point, thank you.
Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, so I'm going to have a huge problem with outcome measure 6.1B, maintain workforce education level of 60% plus with bachelor's degree or higher assessed annually. I think that, I think that, I really, I just find that offensive, frankly. I, I mean, I think that to, to assign a quality measure to how many people have bachelor's degrees is, is a bad way to assess, to assess economic prosperity, to, it sounds like we, it sounds like we value people with bachelor's degrees more than other people. I mean, I don't even think my plumber finished high school, and he, he drives a Mercedes. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I know that overall, higher education is probably statistically correlated with economic prosperity, but I think setting up a certain level, a certain education level as a town goal, I think sends the wrong message. I don't think that's inclusive at all. So I would like to see that just absolutely gone.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? How would you measure that anyhow, Aaron? That seems kind of hard to even measure.
So it's, workforce education is not workforce of the town, it's workforce of Morrisville as a community. It's information we can get from American Community Survey census data, and it's, it is an economic development component. When, when folks are looking to maybe locate a business here and they want to know what the education level of the community is, that is one of the things they look at. But certainly understand your point, and we'll take that back as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not, I'm not saying that it's not a metric that we, that we can collect, that we can offer to businesses that are looking to locate here. I just think that setting that up as a town goal with a number on it, I just, that just completely roads me the wrong way.
So I was next, and then we have other council members. To address that one a little bit, if you can talk about more like tracking and supporting pathways to higher education in general, including trades and things like that, kind of think more of the Wake Tech. So, and it is an important tracking mechanism for economic development. People will look to our town to see what our education attainment is, but we do want to make sure that we're not devaluing anyone who doesn't have these degrees. We're a place where people can come to work or learn to change their jobs or things like that, which I think is important. So I'm kind of agreeing with that. And the business-friendly opportunities and toolkit, I think of it as, when you send out a new resident packet, it's almost like a new business packet. So if we can provide those kind of resource things, like, okay, the Duke Energy, but in this case, it's an entrepreneurial center or some kind of support mechanism, things like that. There's also Launch Raleigh and Launch Cary. I don't see the Morrisville Chamber mentioned in here at all. I guess they're a tool and they'd be used through this as one of our partners or collaboratives, but they're so important to us, they are our economic development arm. Maybe consider having them in here in some way. Might be meaningful to show our partnership with them. Would be some thoughts on that.
I actually just had one more thing there, which was that I don't think that any of these initiatives will affect that metric. So in other words, we're, there's nothing in the list of initiatives that'll drive any change in that metric, and I think that that's something we want to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you. The order is Vicky Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Garamella, please. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding to economic prosperity, it is a common kind of metric across the United States to say how many individuals in a town or a location or region have a bachelor's degree or higher. And that data is readily available. To say that we're trying to attain, you know, a population that has 60% or higher is, like Councilmember Robati said, might be a little bit over the top, although Chapel Hill does have such a goal. I am very much a champion of our community college system, mostly because community colleges are adaptable and they retrain our workforce for future jobs. So there are people with bachelor's degrees that don't have the skills to get the new jobs that are coming online, and our community colleges do offer opportunities for classes, certification, and even degrees that will help bridge those gaps. So a bachelor's degree is not the only metric, maybe, that we should be thinking about. We should be thinking possibly about how many certifications, how much new degrees or advanced analytics degrees, you know, something about adapting our workforce to the future. And also, there is an unmet need that keeps growing every single year, and that is in the area of trade. And I know Wake Tech is starting to retool and embrace the fact that we don't have enough electricians, we don't have enough plumbers, we don't have enough pipe fitters, we don't have enough auto mechanics, and we don't have enough people that have general trade skills that can help our businesses and residences when they are not freshly built. We need to have a workforce that is prepared to meet those needs, and not everybody would be interested in a bachelor's degree. So Wake Tech is such a wonderful, wonderful educational opportunity kind of source for not only Morrisville residents, but the region as well. So if we could incorporate some workforce trade, maybe metrics or information that is readily available about retraining, that I think would be helpful because that would see how nimble and agile our population is.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
I got a different opinion, because I, all they are saying is 60%, they're not saying 100%. And I've heard the governor again and again, again and again, saying, you know, our triangle area is the bed for all the innovation and the workforce that we get of the research triangle park from Duke, NC State, and UNC. And we know our A-rate salary income is $90,000 compared to others. This, putting a line there, is only attracting economic prosperity in more forms to come so that they have ready labor to work. And that is exactly why Apple is here and other, you know, companies we just had last week, the company that came in to the Stitch, they need good workforce. And without a bachelor, you know, no one is hiring in any of those. Not necessarily discounting the other trades, which is critically important, but just saying 60%, I see absolutely no issues there.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Just to follow up on what Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said, I mean, I think as you look at the, the challenge of workforce education, just a few weeks ago, or last week, Dr. Rawls, President of Wake Tech, spoke at the U.S. Senate, and he was talking about how Wake Tech, he calls it a ladder college, where, you know, typically your bachelor's degrees provide you the skills for the job, but they don't necessarily do a good job telling you about the career pathways. So a community college actually provides both the skills and the wrongs for people to move up. And that's really, like, for example, Wake Works, which is an apprenticeship program. Apprenticeships are very important. Somebody could not have a college degree and they could go through an advanced manufacturing apprenticeship or an apprenticeship, and then have the skills and the online, and the experience to be able to go into a company and actually move up. So I think it's critically important that, you know, and the final thing he said was that, which I found interesting, is that even though in the metropolitan area of the Triangle region, if people are poor, it's very unlikely they're going to be able to move beyond that. And so he really believes it's important for the community college to partner with institutions so that there's that mobility. So the reason I say all that is I think that's really, I mean, we talk about it here with just, you know, the workforce training, the school boards, the school systems, but I think it's really important, and, you know, we've challenged the Educational Advisory Committee to also look at this issue in terms of just, I mean, when Councilmember Garamella had the idea of starting that, one of the things that he mentioned was the fact of, what are the skills that we want to provide our kids, whether it's in STEM or problem solving or whatever, to provide them the pathways so that, you know, they can be in Morrisville and be very competitive for the jobs in the future. And so the discussion we're having today is changing every minute we speak, just because the innovation is occurring so fast. So that's, I think, something that we have to keep, keep our, keep our pulse on.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Tim.
So I don't, well, first of all, I think there's a huge difference between the governor saying that, between the governor expressing a metric about education level and us having a goal of 60% of people with bachelor's degrees. So if we fall to 55%, how do we pick the 5% that has to move out so we can get back up? up to par? I mean, that's, that's two entirely different things. That's the first thing. And I don't necessarily disagree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, but I do think that, I think that we should, we should focus staff, time, and energy. I mean, we have limited resources, and I think to take on a goal like educating the workforce or, or, you know, I think we, I mean, we can, we can follow, we can look for trends, we can, I think we're purely in an advisory and communications role there. I don't see that as a, as a, as something that we have a ton of time and energy to devote, like, we can't devote a lot of cycles to making sure that Wake Tech is preparing people for the future. I mean, we're so lucky that they are. You know, we, it's a real asset to us that they are, but I think we need to make a really clear distinction between education goals and town goals. It's town goals, I mean, we can't drive change in education opportunities in a, in a real way. You know, not that we should stop trying, you know, we need more schools, we, you know, it's great we have Wake Tech, but, but I just think we need to focus our resources where we can make the most impact.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
So I, I hear what Councilmember Robati is saying about how this comes across as offensive, so maybe we figure out a way to tweak the wording a little bit, because I don't think the intent was to be offensive. I think, I think the intent is to relate this to the, the fact that the, the employment centers here in Morrisville and the jobs here in Morrisville are, are more Fortune 500 company jobs. They're, they're biotechnology and life sciences and IT, and those, those jobs that are physically here in the town of Morrisville do require, require a degree, at least a bachelor's degree, and if not even higher. So I think this, this one line is, is, it's in reference to that more than anything. I don't think it's, it's meant to disparage or degrade others, because I'm with you, Erin. There are, there are, there are trade jobs out there that quite frankly are as valuable, if not more valuable. And I mean in, in their service to the community. I don't mean in value and how, how much a person is paid, although that, that, that too could be true. But, you know, those jobs are equally as important and valued to our communities. So if we could somehow make that apparent as well and tweak the wording a little bit to make sure that we are referencing the, the type of employment that's here. You know, if we had a plumbing headquarters here where there were plumbers employed, that would be very valuable, and we would, we would somehow recognize that maybe, but, but that's not what we have here. We have, we have these other biotech and IT and life sciences jobs. So I don't know, that's just my kind of two cents on that topic.
Yeah, I see Objective 6.2 and Initiative 6.2 are pretty linear in identifying the needs and trying to fill those gaps. So I think eventually by doing that, we actually get the people with the bachelor degrees or the trade degrees that they need to serve these needs. So I think this plan will get us there. It's just a matter of how much resources, and if we're pretty much still outsourcing it to Morrisville Chamber, and being more of a viewing or being an active participant in the game of economic development. So that's something that we're going to have to decide as a council moving forward. So this is a good initiative and a good, good goal to be working on overall, big number six, to finish this up. I don't see any other comments, giving you the, the closing in the last words. Thoughts?
Yes, thank you. We'll check in on our timeline and when we'll meet again. So I mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we spoke, we're currently wrapping up Step Six. The steps that you see highlighted in green are complete. Following tonight's discussion, we'll take your feedback, we'll meet with staff, we'll further refine this language and prepare some final draft changes for council review. That is currently scheduled for June. Action scheduled for either later in June or July, just sort of depends on how the agenda schedule falls. I want to also pause and recognize Town Manager Page, see if she has any additional comments or thoughts as we wrap up.
I don't. Thank you for your hard work tonight.
Yeah. Thank you all for your feedback. Really appreciate it. If you have anything additional that comes to mind, or, you know, something you see as you're going through town in the next few days, please feel free, reach out to me. Get, get, get your email to me by the end of the week. We want to make sure we, we hear from everybody, and I'll do some individual follow-up with Councilmember Fender. Want to make sure she's got an opportunity to share as well. Thank you all very much for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. It's really obvious there's lots of hard work been done in the background of this one.
Thank you.
A lot of depth. Thank you so much. Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, will facilitate the next discussion. Mr. Zudema?
There, we had, we had sort of suggested a break between this and the next since the next one could be 90 minutes.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Right now, it's 8:20. Let's reconvene at 8:31, please. Thank you, Town Manager Page.